Okay.
Yes.
Is everybody set up or?
Just to test us. Just to test us.
Good.
But they send us all emails on the show.
Calls me to order at 5:31 PM. Any declaration of special interest or general nature, please clear it now. Seeing no conflict of interest, we'll forward the agenda number three in camera at 5:30 PM. So I need a motion for... It's coming. Motion put forward by Councilor Gurrell, submitted by Councilor Winkie. The committee will adjourn and inform Councilor in camera to consider litigation on potential litigation matters, to consider proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality board, and to consider personal matters about identifiable individuals as pertaining to concealed search and H.R. matters. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in paper, please signify. All those opposed, carry. I will also make note that Councilor maybe sent his regrets that he wanted to join us at the meeting this evening.
Wait.
Oh, the orange cup.
Do I... I take it home with me. It's not going in there. I have to go back.
Oh, well, no, he can.
I take those home because that's...
...
Okay. Are you telling?
You have to. Do you have any like that? Hmm, can I see that? Can we do this one? Uh, maybe not because I'm just too, hey, but I do all that except for the pages. Do you want me to do this one first? We still need this one. I'll just check for others.
Maybe she's tired now, or she's just nervous. She's not talking.
I mean, it's not forever.
I like, I'd say, I was. Oh, I'd say, I'm not. I'd say, I'm not. We, we. I don't know, I don't love being walked in. Yeah. Like, I didn't, I just, I didn't think it out of my head and I was like, this is whatever person.
See.
All that. And he said, he's like, I just can make it, I just can wear signs and your tests, I mean, I was like, okay, for tests, I'll get everything. Whereas in assignment, I have to be to work on her, and so I kind of made it like a. No, this is not it. This is garbage. I'm throwing off it. Oh, my God.
Are you keeping track of it?
Yeah.
But I can change the word, have it down there. Some of the last fingers, um.
We both got asked already.
Yeah. The most good number, we had a ten dollar left on us.
I'm gonna say, okay. Fire me, it's like, whatever.
I don't know. You guys are weekly, have few nuts for school days and summer classes, really. Yeah, I'm crazy, you know.
Actually. My second word, this meditation.
People.
And then they were people. That's a signature.
Or anything where you.
Yeah. At the shoppers.
Sorry.
On your final warning stuff, what design?
That's your signature? It takes a long time, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Do you know how?
It depends, isn't it? So, does that?
A question. Uh, during the session, does the public have the ability to ask a question, particularly in a zoning, or no?
Yes, it's committee pool.
Sorry?
Yeah, it's committee pool, so any members of the public may ask questions during, uh, one of the.
Yeah, there's one area that we're, we're interested in, just wanted to make sure that we're.
Sure.
Able to ask questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you could, you could follow during that one. Have you asked for time last time?
I don't know. Because, I mean, they don't really work in the summer time. Um, I mean, if I work, it's not an aspect, but like, they do more in the summertime, if you're a hard worker, yeah.
So, do you have like full time work hours and you need to get like six, three hours a day?
I give like four hundred something hours a year this semester. So, it's very much like, I mean, it's a bracket, it's like, average, maybe.
Yeah, your, your salary, for the school, how like, how much? Like, I'm going to do it two different four days, then you're like, oh, it's okay, or you can use vacation or something. I'm not sure. If I ask.
Yeah. I'm hoping, I'm, I can, you know, it's, G B will, oh, it's new member, I'm looking at. Oh, I can hear.
Yeah. And so.
She will, I'm trying to see her like two months before this semester started, and I was like, I don't know, I think I'll probably end the job. And I took like two or three weeks to check, and she went in, and like, I don't know, I reached out to her, I didn't know, I don't know, we talked about doing your P L, I don't know, she means her time in the back either. Or like, to live in your job.
Yeah.
To check loose, and you're not.
Who's the co-op teacher?
Uh, Miss Collins. And she's new, she just turned to corporate last year, year before, last year she worked, she worked best, like.
Who used to be a co-op teacher?
Um, Miss Anderson.
She's not also a fellow.
She just teaches hospitality, you know?
Oh.
So, that's why it's long, it's over the, a while, but, um. Ever, but not so great things. Like, they're being, they're just like, like, around, trying to get more places and stuff.
She's like, maybe over last time, figure out a job.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. To get, like, she has, like, twenty five or twenty five every week, that's like. Most obvious things, which they always get into. I'm not, so that's why I'm not saying that. But like. But like, I definitely, and I'm, I was, I was there two months ago.
Yeah, and how many of them don't have their kids in there?
I think the majority of them are.
Have it figured out?
Yeah, pretty much all of them, it's like, the flight, and you do an interview, and you go, or not, like.
What do you like?
What am I gonna do?
I'm talking about doing, you're actually calling to my position. Right. I don't remember what mine is called, though. There's one athletic base, right? Yeah, it's sports, but it is. I can't remember. Calvin Wells. Calvin Wells, yes, that was it. I think that's the one. And there's a garage to the lobby. There's a little, like, closets, right? Yeah, you don't, I don't, I guess that was.
I'm doing my.
Yeah, garage kind of the lobby. All the, the council meetings. I don't like the building. My distribution. We don't have a lot, sorry. I have a work, I trust, I'm like, I'm sure. So, yeah, I just want like, how long was that, so it was super busy, so, yeah. And I have, I have to do it daily, very odd hours. Yeah, I just, that's a bit during the summer, and it's super busy, so, I have something on that. It's real nice, how much I'll be. Whenever I looked at, possibly, definitely, six years ago. For the good use, like, being a host. Yeah, it was, it was, I was like, what? I actually got the most time. I used to be. I did my co-op with my gym teacher. Oh, you did this for her.
I mean, I'm not sure this is true.
I think it's in the store.
Because she's my, I can see options.
No, basically, costume model, we would be able to, we could stay up. Um. I don't know why she had to do things like that.
So she's gonna be, how much longer to gym?
So there's a, can you tell, like, she's all the ones? Yeah, and we all get some gyms, like, I never. I mean, here right now. I think a lot of like, I don't know, like, it is funny, for some reason, a lot of people are a lot of internalization, or internalization, why? Yeah, I just, it's frustrating to not enforce a discussion on a social picture. I'm not managing, I'm studying. My teacher, I'm supposed to, I wasn't really. So she was lying, and she was like, oh, the teacher really, so she was, you know, like, she's from here, and like, there's nothing to do, she's a student, so. As a great, I'm like, yeah, I can say it great, though. It was like, great one, catch you, you know, it was like a page a lot, and I just thought that. Almost like balancing, right? Yeah, I was like, I just. Yeah. Yeah, so, it's my time. So, yeah, it's gonna exercise, right? Yeah. Like, cubes of the knowledge, or creatures, I'm like, just like, I'm like, I love.
Obviously, that's, I'm not, but.
Question. So, well, my first part is about teaching.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm like, this guy, I've never.
So, and like, maybe Mr. Does. Would you like Mr. Newson to teach him right now, if he's, is he?
He has taught, has teaching classes, I think.
For a teacher, can you teach her? Sometimes it was years, I mean, when it was passing, it's like. He was like, the lesson, but it was forty minutes, he wrote, and we did a lesson that wasn't under any of his words. What am I doing right now, like, this is insane. He was talking about, or basically, the change, and people were like, no, like.
Nutrition, that was nutrition, that's what I said, you're pretty much, like, unless you need straight letters, you're gonna die, or basically, that's like, wow, like, this is great. We live at home, we like, I came out there, I'll get all that.
Yeah, this guy's not staying, he's like, he's like, wait. Come on. I need to, I don't know, please.
Yeah? Look, I heard the door. Just messing with you. Is that, is that the answer you were like?
I'm like, is that, like, what kind of, who are the dancers, do you? Oh, do you really want to answer, we have thirty students in the class, and none of you ask, and some of them are sitting on the wall. Oh, my god. The guys are going through all this, with all the cuts and. Your online learning. We have thirteen students for thirty students. So not even, not even one or two students, like, students, you know, that's in your kid club? Hmm. I'm so proud of you. And I know it's no one in the school's fault. I want to just put that in the paper, maybe? Yeah. Are they funny? Oh, it sounds, more than two students per class, no? Yep.
It wouldn't be like, you know, obviously, you still feel it's accident, but it wouldn't be a, like, severe, the effects of the nurse, we'll take information out for a minute.
I'm just thinking, so if we, if we, if we, if we, we look at the DJ, it's like, you know, it's.
Oh, it's, I don't know. Did you have that?
We're gonna go to our. It's only four, it's just a little. We're council.
I'm like, yeah, I'm done, I'm done.
Please, sir. Yeah, it's so bad, I'll make this room here, it's so bad. I don't know, it's why. Have you tried?
Okay, so we're back in session, um, I'm going out of closed session, that the staff give direction to the board on a number of initiatives, and we'll be doing so after. The next, uh, point on our agenda is delegations and presentations, oh, sorry, I apologize, one of the corrections, editing camera, is a motion made by Deputy Mayor Lackey, seconded by Council, okay, the Council arguments approval and appointment of two applicants, full passing and garrer winded to the economic development committee, any discussion on this motion? Counselors. Being put from the gallery. That's a podium.
How many applicants were there?
There were two. So, obviously not a stampede or plenty, but still pleased with the, uh, the applicants on the list, any other for the discussion on this motion? Seeing none of call question, all those have paper, please signify, all those posed, carry. Or the advice, like, successful candidates, thank you. Now moving on to number four of our agenda, just remind the delegations that are here today that they have ten minutes to present, and we'll try and keep our questions short to the point, so we can move forward with the meeting. First on the agenda is Matthew and Victoria, youth representatives for the municipal drug strategy, if you'd like to come forward. Please stand at the podium and state your name and your position and how you're relieved, thank you.
So I'm Victoria Grace, um, I'm youth representative for municipal, municipal drug strategy.
Uh, my name is Matthew Dennison, I'm also member of the municipal drug strategy, and we're both from Genakwe Secondary School.
Thank you. Residents of the township.
And residents of the township.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, first, we'll give you a little background, since we haven't, uh, been here to present to any of you guys yet, so Matthew and I represent Genakwe Secondary School, um, about a year, over a year ago, we were, um, approached by Kim Marshall and another public health nurse. And we gathered in Genakwe Secondary School to talk about drug use in the community, it was really important for the municipal drug strategy to have youth representatives on part of the committee, because, um, we do represent a very big part in the community. So we wanted to present to you, um, the findings that we got over the past year, over a year, so first of all, we started with six students, um, in one classroom, that were pretty representative of our school, of our student body, like, in Aqui Secondary School. And then we expanded that to about, um, two hundred and fifty students, when we did a survey and asked them several questions, um, we've also taken this further to present at Party Smart, where we interviewed approximately a hundred students at Genakwe Secondary School, asking them what they would like to see in the community. And then we also took this further when we met with a few students in the community to discuss what they would like to see, um, as Matthew and I are aware that we are naive to certain aspects of what needs to be done in the community. So first regarding the, um, results for the MENTI survey that we conducted at our school.
So when we asked two hundred and thirty of our peers what drugs they're seeing being used in their community and the township, the main four substances that we found were cannabis, tobacco, alcohol, and vaping. We also asked what influences students to use drugs if they choose to partake in, that was activities, and there were usually, were two or three reasons for students using drugs, um, role models is a big one, um, who they look up to, whether they use or do not use coping strategies for stress and other, um, things like distress, um, social influences, mental health, and then boredom, nothing to do, um, other than use substances they may think that, um, has some for milk fulfillment. Most, and another thing you've noted is that most students do not use drugs, um, from the Ontario Student Drug Survey, we know that ninety percent of students did not use tobacco products in the last twelve months, we also know that sixty seven percent of students reported no cannabis use in the last twelve months, and thirty seven percent did not use alcohol in the last twelve months. Um, there were many reasons students do not, students do not use drugs, and four of these reasons are health risks, family, school, and their future aspirations. We also, um, asked the students through our MENTI survey, what their future aspirations, goals and aspirations were, um, when they get out of high school, and, um, the biggest one was to actually go through and graduate high school, um, they wanna go on to post-secondary, get a job and become successful, they want to reach financial independence, um, so they are sustainable, um, an adult of the end, um, can go to, um, post-secondary school and get a good job.
So then when we did the Party Smart event at our school and surveyed, um, a hundred students approximately, we heard that they wanted to see a youth center, less public vaping and smoking, so stricter rules for vaping, public transportation including real access to neighboring communities, courts for basketball, volleyball, more involvement from council, mental health support, more health promotion, more events for youth and entertainment for youth, more job opportunities, more youth volunteer opportunities, decriminalization of all drugs, so less criminal charges and more support, and an indoor community center. So from our various surveys and recommendations, um, over the course of a year, this is a really short, uh, presentation, however, this is a lot of hard work that Matthew and I and various members from the community have put forth over a large span of time, so hopefully we are doing somewhat justice, but from our surveys of youth recommendations that we come for you to support are creating opportunities for youth in Genakwe and T L T I, a youth hub, safe space after school and in summer, um, and starting this conversation with the municipal drug strategy group. Youth voice and perspective, create a way that council can consult youth, reach out to us at school or through student body, and T L T I does this, um, already with the youth council. Denormalizing youth and increased positive role models, stricter regulations for smoking, vaping, and public alcohol consumption. So we would like to ask you guys a question now, um, to initiate this change in the community, so how do you see your council supporting our work?
That is a very good question, and unorthodox, what I'm used to, for the hall. Usually, we're, we're asking the, uh, the, the gallery for input, but duly noted, and, um, I'm sure that we have some council really like to weigh in here, Councilor Earl, did I see you, put your hand up first? Counselor Correll, did I see you put your hand up first?
Thank you. Your worship had the pleasure of attending, I believe it was in October, when you folks made a nice presentation at the Municipal Drug Strategy in Ganakwe and it was very impressive, I must say thank you, and your participation in that didn't go under as far as hell. I walked away from that meeting wondering about youth centers and what you would want to see physically in the youth center. I'm an old fellow now and I'm in times of change and so I'd be very curious whether you all have sat down and considered what is it that people would like to see, for instance, it could be a park library, a few hours, anything that would be something that I think that moving forward, our strategies would be helpful with.
Thanks. Counselor Correll?
Thank you, worshiped through you. I as well was at that meeting in October in which your presentation as Counselor Correll indicated was well done. A question I have, I'll get around to your question and then, was there any percentage of use on vaping? Did you come up with a number for that?
Um, we did not come up with a percentage, no.
Is that to be encouraging or wasn't a question asked?
Vaping was up there as one of the major uses and kind of especially throughout the school community and which would also branch out to after-school and after we'll come home from school. So we, as we don't have the actual survey numbers with us unfortunately, the numbers were very, were very high for that.
Yeah, I think we approached that question more with just generally what drugs are used most in the community and you can definitely say that youth, the utilization of vaping is definitely one of the most prominent in the community and that is something that we have discovered.
Okay, thank you. The reason I ask is obviously it's in every piece of news article that you pick up right now, so your question, that's what we're going to provide for you. We'd be negligent as a council not to listen to the youth of our township. And as to get a commitment from council here tonight, it's not that likely. It is the nature of the beast of the council not to fore-voter in their hand and with the proper research, but I for one will do what we can to support you and if you want to narrow it into goals as to what you're looking for from us, we're all ears to listen.
I think, sorry, continue. Okay. I think that Matthew and I have definitely discovered over the past, like year, over a year, is that there isn't a simple solution to drug use in the community and there is many supports that have to be put in place in order to reach a final goal. So this is just among one of those supports that we are taking and a step we're taking to better the future in that of our. However, we did want to present you with just those three main factors that we are focusing on from all the information we've gathered thus far and that is the youth hub, incorporating youth voice and denormalizing use, public use, and increasing positive role models in the community publicly.
Counselor Jameson and Deputy Mayor Lackey and Counselor Opey.
I attended the meeting that you had two weeks ago, so I'd like to thank Victoria and Matthew for commentary tonight, but also we had a rather robust discussion of opportunities and their contribution to that conversation leads me to basically answer your question by saying, we really just simply need to ask you what you think we should be doing, one, and two, collectively, we shouldn't be waiting months on him to get a smaller group together to try to get some of these things off the ground. From my point of view as the person representing Sealy's Bay Lindhurst area, we have particularly dark zone up there with respect to the use of public buildings and how might we, my question back to you is, how might utilize those public buildings to make them safe and welcoming places for you as you presented to us the other day? It's not a putting in more competitive spaces, it's put in welcoming spaces. So what do we need to do and how often can we get together to make this a reality? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor and then Counselor.
Thank you, worshiped through you. Thank you both for what you brought to us, but Counselor Jameson has pretty much covered everything I was depending on too.
Thank you worshiped through you. Mostly Counselor Jameson has answered the question I think I would have answered for you, essentially optimizing the spaces we have for now, trying to lean into the future based on inputs. It's one thing for someone like me to think what you might want, it's no different what you might tell me they want. I did notice something that seemed contradictory, decriminalization of all drugs and then denormalization of drug use. I'm a veteran of the war on drugs. I've seen people killed over drugs. It's not an easy thing for me to, to just take as a concept, sorry. But all the other part of your presentation, very well done, thank you.
And Ms. Goodman, you had something to go?
Absolutely. And just to kind of bring this all together, of course, staff have been working to try to establish a youth advisory committee and engage youth across our township now for a number of years. And let me tell you, it is no easy feat. I sat down, I think, the first time with this group and I was cracking jokes that I thought, you know, would, would make me cool and engaged and it turns out that I'm far older with this group than I ever thought was possible. But I'm really pleased to share with Kim, that both Carolyn Kay and Trish Cowan, who are both in the Community and Business Services Department, have been actively working with, attending Municipal Drug Strategy, trying to make themselves available. We were very fortunate, we received $1,400 donation from the Davies Foundation, which we've invested in the Lansdowne Community Hall to create a space especially designed for our youth and in fact later this month, we will be hosting our first youth advisory committee and their new home over at the Lansdowne Community Hall. We're trying to share information through our newsletter and incent and encourage youth to continue to participate, get engaged, get in the know and connect with their communities through our youth bursary with the deadline fastly approaching for that. So just to make sure that that was on everyone's radar, huge thanks to the Davies Foundation and of course to our active and engaged youth.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. So with that, I think that the counselors have given you quite bits to work with, but also we're quite encouraged with the fact that we do have an active youth group here in the village and hopefully expanding through further reaches within the municipality, but that we are actively pursuing ways that we can get the youth involved and both of you are very fine examples of very capable young people coming to a meeting such as this in a formalized setting and having no qualms with speaking in front of us and bringing the points to our attention, which are very important. So we thank you for your time and your investment in this because these are yours, but it is also in the future, so we do appreciate that, thank you.
I guess just to end it off, will you guys, something Matthew and I have also recently discovered and kind of touching on what you said, and that is that we're really just focusing on the fact that no one does wake up or start their day or their life for that matter in hopes to become addicted to drugs. That's something that we're keeping in our mind and how we can support them in every way. And we do, we would like to say thank you so much for everyone who has come and attended the Municipal Drug Strategy meetings, it is really appreciated. I think it is undervalued about how important it is to take opportunities that arise in the community to show that you care, so thank you and thank you for having us to make.
Thank you for coming. So the motion on the floor is moved by Commander Lackey, seconded by Counselor Opey, that the committee in the hall recommends that council thank Matthew and Victoria for their presentation and to direct staff to continue working with the Municipal Drug Strategy Committee. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carried, thank you. Next delegation presentation on the list is Ann Veer from the United Counties Department President.
Good evening, everyone. And go down twice.
It's on, it's on all the time.
Okay, up higher, got it, height. Thank you. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share the United Counties' Ablies and Grenville Economic Development strategic areas of focus and this is for five years from 2020 to 25 and this was recently approved at County's Council, so we thought it would be timely. County's Economic Development works with many, many different ministries and agencies along with our member, partner, and neighboring municipalities and counties. Communication, we, communicating where we are heading to everyone allows others to plan to ensure we have an efficient and effective delivery of economic development throughout the region. As part of the report, County has engaged various levels of economic, been engaged in various levels of economic development. Actually, just stay on that first slide there with the staff pictures.
It's trying.
It's not working well. I'll continue. We've been involved in economic development since 2003 at various levels. Currently, we maintain a staff of four that will support annual plans to achieve the strategic areas of focus that I'm going to go through. In developing, next slide, in developing the County's Economic Development strategic areas of focus, a literature review was undertaken from several published reports and strategies as listed here. Also, a review of various funding opportunities were considered when developing these strategies so we can leverage County's funds when possible. The primary data set for the BRNE reports, which is Business Retention and Action, were heavily taken into consideration. And I'm just going to grab my little beverage here. There we go, sorry about that. Get rid of that uh-hums. The primary data set from BRNE reports and actions are heavily taken into consideration when developing strategic areas of focus. 300 interviews were done in total and the reports are now available online at the website in baseliesgrenville.com/BRNE. Within the township, there was 31 businesses that were interviewed and that was from within the township and we'll go down to two slides there. Well, the township did not subscribe to full BRNE report. What we did complete was a summary of the qualitative comments from the report that was relevant to your township and I believe that report and document is in your package today. I've put a few of the questions on the slides and I'll just highlight a couple of areas. In the past three years, has your attitude about doing business in your community changed? This was a question on the survey. The survey captures that businesses cease to change in council as a positive along with township and counties being more involved in economic development. Next slide. On the flip side though, there are some negative aspects, challenges with businesses are seeing some in Rockport and issues with Airbnb's and I'm sure this is nothing new to you of some of the challenges that are listed there. Next slide. This question highlights that businesses could change something in the next five years, what would it be? And the two top qualitative comments for your township was internet and population growth. For the County's high-speed internet was also the pace along with business attraction in the areas of small business, business, medium and large manufacturing and industrial, and finally accommodation. Municipal infrastructure improvement or expansion also rated very highly. With all of this information, County then decided to focus on six strategic areas over the next five years. There are no surprises, just enhancements to a well-established economic development program. I'll touch on each of these very briefly. The first strategic area will continue to focus on leadership and capacity building. As you know, we host the Economic Development Summit and I believe most of you come into that event, it's become a signature event for us. Communication between the County's Economic Development staff and municipal staff was very good during the BRNE process. We're going to further enhance that now in the way of trying to be further engaged as a total committee with all of our municipalities. We will continue to build and maintain relationships and partnerships with various entities and some include MP, MVP, three CFDCs in our regions, two small business enterprise centers, employment agencies, we've got three of those, St. Lawrence Corridor Commission, the Economic Development Commission for Eastern Ontario, the list is very, very long and who we connect with as part of our, as part of our network. In regards to networking, it came up in all of our municipalities, if businesses wanted to network more and what we will not be doing is doing individual municipal networking events, but what we will do is support the leadership of those networking opportunities such as Sealy's Bay Lindhurst Chamber of Commerce or other entities that are helping build your business community. The second strategic area focus is a significant one for us, investment readiness and investment attraction for business and industry. Each community is different. Items could include such as municipal profit, priority properties, we want to know what your priorities area of focus, as well as best practices for planning and development. Different communities have different levels of this inventory of services, intermunicipal cooperation for servicing joint initiatives for unserviced land, investors want to have serviced land in many cases. All of these, we're in varying degrees in different times with your township. Digital platform forums, it'll be important for us to maintain a good data set, we will continue to update that and look for solutions on our property listings that have both public and private properties. We'll look to build a content relationship management system with over 4,800 businesses in the counties. We need to find good tracking system in order to maintain good data set and relations. County has already been working with our partner municipalities to discuss what data sets make sense in pulling this information together. We've had several meetings with different companies and proprietors of different types of softwares. Continuing under investment development, yep, stay on that one, there we go, economic development will support intelligent development of an intelligent community strategy. Our connectivity is absolutely critical when it comes to investment, traction, stimulating business growth, entrepreneurship, and our youth retention. We will review and update our multi-language business profiles for the township, there is 18 currently in use and we will update those as well. And traditionally, we have used several different types for this township, often we've used the Mandarin translation. Counties will continue to focus on municipal and industrial business parks, both current and future, as well as site certification from the provincial site and the job site challenge. Now that we have our BRNE reports completed, we will resume a more active role when it comes to investment attraction and lead generation. This could be in the form of trade shows and trade missions. Ministry relations have been absolutely critical when we have been sourcing different types of investment opportunity. The township has received previous service and support in this area. One that we can say we're heavily involved in is Thousand Islands Helicopters, they came in support with us, La Boat, and also the previously Eagle Point Winery, we were heavily involved in. In these, there's a team that forms and prepares, it's not just County's economic development, it's municipality as well as many different agencies and support mechanisms that come around this. This is a full process from support of the attraction and the first cultivation to completion of the information requests by investors to familiarization tours, support for final negotiations, and aftercare. The third strategic area focus on business retention and expansion. We completed the 300 interviews, follow-up has now been completed with all those individuals and we will be moving forward and supporting those companies further. To name a few that we have been heavily involved in, Ridgeway Confections, Bernice Falls Retreat, Green and Greco, Thousand Islands Tower, Rockport Boatline, Smugglers Gend, and there's several many others, but we'll just leave it at that just to give you a sampling. Also in collaboration with municipalities, our partner municipalities, we're looking to develop an industry sector corridor consortium or team. This slide here particularly, this is our business industry members from Cranar, Cardinal Health, Brisbane Group, Burnberry Farms, Giant Tiger was missing on this one. This group formed based on the need that we heard in the initial BRNE findings and what happened was we worked with the economic development agencies of Brockville and Ganakwe as well as the three employment agencies, St. Lawrence College, and what we were able to secure was $500,000 coming into Leads and Grenville in partnership for the product, for Pathways to Production Program. And this provided additional training to individuals who build now previously vacant positions and some of these companies. And many of our companies have actually transitioned to how they do their hiring process based on this new Pathways to Production Program. Similar to this program, we similarly run in Quinsey West and we modified it to fit our local needs. We're looking to formalize that consortium. We're looking to formalize that consortium, and we already had positive feedbacks at our last Pathways to Production to officially get into that next round. And I understand that Cardinal Health is one of our top employers and would probably be also having some of your investment community members involved in that particular company. Counties will also continue to participate in regional opportunities under the Eastern Ontario Economic Development Strategy. Finally, this is a new area for us, and this is again based on the BRNE results. We heard about the issues around talent attraction and workforce development. What we want to do is a repositioning to make sure our workforce is empowering this region. We're looking to narrow the gap between business and the education sector, and in your report you'll see various steps for that. There's also looking to do partnerships in talent attraction from the digital side. What we discovered was many of our local employers are only hiring within what they see in that silent job market. So we're looking to bring and take their request for additional travel, additional skills at an outside level to bring new people into our region, so to again help with increasing population, but yet bringing those skills traits that we may not have. We're also looking to work with employers on that upskilling and developing programs that would, in concert with St. Lawrence College, that can be delivered locally, and that's what we've heard from them, was we want to deliver locally. We're looking to explore strategies for the attraction and retention of young professionals. They are our future, and it was wonderful to hear from the group just prior here. Inter student students as well is a very good opportunity for us to build our future workforce. And finally, on the workforce development side, we'll continue to build awareness of existing programs, and many of our employers do not know about the programs and how it can be taken advantage of. The fifth strategic area is our diversified economy. Previously, we had specifically noted tourism, but what was reality? We were servicing all of these sectors, transportation logistics, advanced manufacturing and chemistry, agriculture and food, as well as the tourism hospitality. This is more realistic of what we are actually doing. While these are current sectors, we would be remiss if we do not look to our neighbors in the way of water the opportunities. To our north of the Counties in Ottawa, they have a very tech-centered on both in life sciences, and they also host, have sixty-five research labs there and doing autonomous vehicle testing there as well. In Kingston, we have the Chinese investment of Pihap. And there again, there's opportunities to how do we look to take some of the pieces that need to be done within a local jurisdiction and partner with them on that. We will always be responsive to our local needs. If something happens in our local community, one example in this community would be the casino. When we were, the casino was in transition, we certainly paid attention and got engaged with that. So any of those ones, we're very reactive to making sure and try to be as much proactive as we can. The sixth and final area is marketing and communications. We'll continue to update our marketing tools. We've had an interest to expand in the way of communication more about our villages and hamlets, shop local, and our younger entrepreneurs. So those are areas to watch for. And we also just invested with the Ottawa Business Journal in our regional aspect, and we'll be promoting the entire region, getting awareness to what's going on in Leeds-Grenville and to our neighbor just to the north. Finally, we will be doing a comprehensive marketing plan. Most of the marketing from the Counties has come from the economic development because we seem to be mostly the external arm for that, so we agree to, yes, take that on as well. I hope this provides you, on our last slide there, I hope this provides you the insight on our strategic areas of focus for Counties' economic development. My next step will be developing the annual plan that will support these strategic areas of focus, and certainly through the chair, if time, I'm happy to answer any question.
Thank you very much, Anne. Any specific questions in regards to the presentation that's just been made? Or the direction of County that we take with that, with Mayor W.
Thank you, through your worship. Evening, in that, in that of any involvement or investment within our township, will the, will the County and your economic development, will we be notified prior to any of your press decisions?
So when we get involved with a particular investor, your township actually has a critical role in that. In many cases, I'm talking directly with your staff to let them know because it needs to be a team approach. I may bring the investment, but the opportunity is talked amongst your staff, whether it be with the CTO's position, your planner's position. There's various elements to anything being finalized. Certainly, we look to hear what are your interests in the way of investment into the area, but your staff are critically involved in every aspect that we do.
I'd like to say that, and I'm bringing up this La Boat. We were not notified as a council at all, and I don't want to repeat history, so I just want to make sure we're crystal clear in the fact that whatever goes on in this township comes to this table.
Any further questions for Ms. Weir? Councilor Jameson?
Thank you, through your worship. First of all, I appreciate the presentation very much. I took the opportunity, some weeks ago, probably months, to go through the appendices on some of the study themselves, and it sort of, it raises the concern that the business community in some respects expects, expects the various economic development groups, whether they're municipal or county, to be their business association. And that is a concern because of my background, and I, some of the appendices may be worth, as you go through this process of renewing your programs, to bring to the business community and challenge them to step up and organize themselves in, in, in a larger way than they do now. We have chambers of commerce, it seems, in every, every village, some of them are cities, I guess, I think. But it's necessary for these business owners to understand that their large collective will allow them to actually have our critical mass, and it's something that, in the appendices, it's kind of what they're saying, except it hasn't been really vocalized in a way that may be of value to your economic development mission. So that's a comment. The other thing is that the federal government has announced this municipal strategy to encourage newcomers to come to our, our area. Is this an area where the County is looking, and if so, is there a strategy there yet, or is it too soon to expect you respond to that? And is it up to us as a municipality, or is it I or Terry that can look at this? And I'm putting that aside, I'm sorry, that it's a new program, I apologize.
Ms. Weir? So if I could address the two items. First, in regards to your business community. One of the things that we said we would look to do is provide leadership and support to the leaders of your entities. So whether it's your Chamber of Commerce, we're not going to run their organizations, but we recognize there's different, varying degrees to how well they are doing. So we are, we hear you loud and clear on the other comment we're regarding challenging the businesses, the business community on this. So thank you for that comment, because we heard that. In regards to the municipal newcomers, I'll take a closer look at the program. We are a partner with the Leeds and, just trying to remember, Leeds and Grenville Immigration Partnership, and I think they've just renamed theirselves to the St. Lawrence Corridor Grouping of the Immigration Partnership. And we, through them, submitted a letter of support for an application to broaden their program to this specific program. I'll have to double-check if that was the actual program that we applied. I think it was one before. So that's how we get involved from the immigration side providing, is being a member at the table with the other entities and supporting where possible.
Any further questions or comments in regards to Mrs. Weir's? Councilor Fode, sorry, I have a mental block there.
Sorry, through your worship. Ms. Weir, you would need to keep it, now that you're done the BRB strategy, you're going to concentrate more on interactivity with, with the businesses. I dropped my memory, but I've had three different individuals who run single businesses tell me that they cannot attend these types of functions, they're held in the daytime, they would literally have to shut their doors to be there. My question to you is, do you reach out to all businesses by email, the internet, such, so that they can interact other than physically being there?
So we have an e-newsletter. We encourage, we have forty-eight hundred businesses in the region. We encourage businesses to subscribe to that. It's focused on business needs. So in regards to courses and programs, we put all of those workshops in that particular piece. There are different mechanisms, whether some of them are online, some of them are in person, and some are not necessarily within your jurisdiction, they can go outside of the boundary. So that's why we encourage all the different workshops, so we try and play as much flexibility. In the small to micro businesses, absolutely. We hear that, that they can't close the door to do some of these things. So I have, we have met with the agent, support agencies, such as the employment agencies or the Small Business Enterprise Center, and communicated that to them, that perhaps because some of them were saying, well, we're not getting enough people out, well, is it the time of which you're offering the program? So we've communicated that to them and challenged them a little bit to address that concern.
Any further questions in regards to Ms. Weir's presentation? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, well, thank you for your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the motion on the floor is put by Councilor Fode and seconded by Councilor Jameson. The committee, the whole, thank Ms. Weir, Economic Development Manager for United Counties, please refer to her presentation on Leeds and Grandville Economic Development Strategy Areas of Focus 2020-2025. Any further discussion? Councilors? Anne? All those in favor? All those opposed? Carrie. So we will move on now to number five on the agenda, staff reports. Planning report number PL-005-20, zoning bylaw amendment, application number Z-2019-006-596, Linder's Road. And the motion comes forward from Councilor Jameson, seconded by Councilor Fode. The committee, the whole, recommends that council approve the requested zoning bylaw amendment attached as exhibit A, planning report number PL-005-20, to rezone the property located at 596 Linder's Road, the rural special exception RU-44, zone to permit a wedding venue on the subject property. Discussion on the motion, or maybe we'll start with the draft of the planning if you'd like to provide a comment before we go down our rabbit hole with the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, through your worship. This application was subject to a public meeting. I don't believe that there were any members of the public that attended that meeting to express any opinions regarding the application. The draft bylaw that's being presented to council includes a definition of a multi-use venue, and also includes the prohibition for overnight accommodation at the event, so that it's strictly an event venue. If there's any questions, I'd like to ask you.
Thank you very much, Director. Any questions or concerns? Councilor Fode?
Thank you, your worship. It's for you, not a question or a concern, really. Just thinking of the very pleasant irony of Ms. Weir's presentation, this would seem to be a perfect example of it. We are adapting perhaps a single-use land to something else, and it looks like a good deal, and no one was against it, so that's my comment.
Thank you, Councilor Fode. Any questions or concerns? Councilor Jameson?
This is not a criticism of the application, it's just a query based on discussion in the application of a commercial kitchen. With respect to us, who assesses what is either a commercial kitchen, kitchen or prep kitchen, the commercial? Is that going to be the County, or is that us?
I believe it's the County. Sorry, Ms. Griffin, excuse me, through you, your mayor. We have commercial kitchens at both our Lansdowne Community Hall and Seeley's Bay Community Hall facilities. Those are designated through the local health unit, and are inspected on a regular, regular basis, so that if we have vendors coming in and using it, that we can supply a letter that states that that facility has been certified. So I'm somewhat confident that this would follow those same rules, regulations, inspections, et cetera.
Any further questions or concerns in regards to this application? Any questions from the public in regards to this application? Seeing none? Oops. If you'd like to come forward, please. Please state your name and your, where you're from.
Good evening. I'm Hallie Tiddell, and I live at 596 Linder's Road. I just wanted to make a quick comment about the commercial kitchen. We aren't actually having a commercial kitchen. We would be having a caterer that has a fully self-contained unit, so we are not actually making an application for such.
Thank you for that application. Is there any other questions, proprietor, in regards to clarification of the application? Councilor Fode?
Thank you, your worship. Well, now that you're at the mic, you're following, it makes you fair game, I guess.
Yes, it does.
Are you running a seasonal operation, so what you're looking at here, being a tent director?
Correct. So the tent would be basically from the beginning of May till mid to end of October, and there might be the occasional winter allotment for a very small party, up to about ten people. But basically, it would mostly be summer months. Correct.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, the motion in hand? All those opposed? Carrie, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, staff report on the docket is planning report number PL-006-20, zoning bylaw amendment, application number Z-2019-014-16, Church Street. And the motion comes forward from Councilor Fode, seconded by Councilor Jameson. The committee, the whole, recommends that council approve the requested zoning bylaw amendment to rezone the subject property, 16 Church Street, to first density residential special exception 2, R1-2-H, attached as exhibit A, planning report number PL-006-20. Discussion on this motion? Perhaps Madam Planner, you want to provide some context? Thank you.
Okay, through your worship, this is an application to rezone the subject property that's currently sticks existing lots within the plan or the village of Lansdowne. The rezoning is to allow for semi-detached dwellings, so a total of twelve units on the six lots. Subsequent application for part lot control lift has been submitted to allow for the division of those lots, so that each resulting semi-detached unit can be a freehold lot and separately conveyed. The special exceptions in the zone are to address some specific setbacks, however, the resulting lots would be similar in nature to the existing lot that would come here. There was a public meeting held, and there was a number of members of the public present, however, only one member spoke, and the question was more with respect to what amounts of the available for the government.
Any further discussion on this? Deputy Mayor?
Through you, your worship. Just to clarify for, for the public or anyone watching, this is the old, well, the end?
Correct, so the adjacent to the, as our program?
Yes. We rezone that for multi uses.
I believe the zoning was for strictly single-family residential lots, is that correct?
Thank you, through you. The existing zoning on it is an open space zone, it was not rezoned at the time?
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments in regards to this? I'll only make one comment myself, and that is, I'm very happy to see this kind of development potentially coming to the village, but I would only ask that the developer keep an open mind to ensure that there's possibly two bedroom units, just to accommodate families for beginning homes. As much as two bedroom units are desirable, three bedroom units are more so. And I realize the footprint is, is small, but at the same time, people have to start somewhere, and there's less and less of those starter homes. Councilor Gurrell, if you'd like to add to that, and I'll take questions when we get back.
I have that, through you, your worship. And to the planning department, once again, we have the holding symbol, and the sentence of reading said, "It shall only be removed once an amending subdivision agreement has been approved by the township and registered on title." Could you explain that to me, please?
Thank you, through your worship. As I mentioned, we are also in receipt of an application for part lot control for this, so we have six existing lots within a planned subdivision. What part lot control does is remove What part lot control does is removes the lot fabric control and allows a new property fabric to be placed down. So, in this case, it would be a resulting twelve lots, which is the subdivision of each of the six lots. In looking at that, the amended subdivision agreement will look at the servicing for each lot, so the water and sewer connections. It will look at the grading and drainage for the property, so it'll be a stormwater management plan. So, the amended subdivision agreement will include all of the technical engineering and detailed design for this block. And so, once that agreement is registered on title to the lots, it's binding to future owners in terms of the technical details of the properties. So, that's the reason for the holding symbol, to make sure that those details are done to township's approval before that holding symbol is lifted.
Oh, wow.
Through you, Your Worship. I remember, or at least I believe I remember, that this may go ahead, the development may go ahead in sort of two phases. They were uncertain when they made their presentation. So, the subdivision agreement would wrap, be the whole property previous to any construction. Is that correct?
Through you, Your Worship. That's correct. The subdivision agreement will apply to the whole block and finalize the details of the engineering design before any development occurs. And the subdivision agreement will be registered against the entire block. That being said, the holding symbol could be lifted in phases, depending on when they're prepared to move ahead with different portions of the area.
And is it this planning department or this council that's responsible for lifting that?
Yes, council is responsible for lifting all of it.
Councillor Fodey?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you, Your Planner. With regards to the drainage, this particular property has significant effect on neighboring properties, or even across the street. The west side drainage, which directly runs toward our standpipe, our water tower, if you will. Will we always have control over any issues that may arise because of drainage? Whether it's self-service or not?
Through you, Your Worship. There's an existing drainage pattern on the property in terms of the way it sits today. The applicant has had an engineering firm do a detailed stormwater management review of the property. There will be stormwater controls proposed for the lots to try to control the runoff, so that the post-development runoff doesn't exceed what's there today and hopefully improve the existing drainage pattern. The township will have a peer review of engineer, look at the detailed plans, to review them, to make sure that those controls are there. So, with the subdivision agreement that I spoke of, all of the stormwater controls will be drawn through that subdivision agreement, so that we will have control to make sure that they're maintained by the town.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, council, for bringing that up. I just wrote that down, and I know it's because we will be responsible, because that drainage does come onto downtown property. And I know as present, we're having some issues in that area. So, I would really hope that we look into that.
It'd be a good time to address other issues at the time, but everything's being done, so I would opportunity, if you will. Do believe it. Any questions from the public? Any inquiries? Seeing none, I'll call a question for the motion that's on the floor. All those in favor, a motion in hand? All those opposed? Carry. Thank you. Next, planning report on the docket is planning report number PL-007-20, bylaw, zoning bylaw amendment, application number Z-2019-016, 81 County Road 32. And the motion's put on the floor by Councillor Fodey and moved by Councillor Jameson. The committee, the whole recommends that council approve the requested zoning bylaw amendment attached as Exhibit A to planning report number PL-007-20, to rezone the property located at 81 County Road 32, to rural industrial special exception 17, MR 17, zone to permit a propane distribution plant and retail sales center. Discussion on this motion? Councillor Fodey?
Thank you, Your Worship. Back when this was first brought to council, there was no negative indications from any of the neighbors of the helicopter tourism. The flight plan was, wasn't questioned. Has that been addressed yet?
Madam Planner?
Through you, Your Worship. Yes, it has. There's been working, the applicant has worked with the owner that presented concerns at the last meeting, as well as with Matt Canevitt, to address those concerns. We have received correspondence that the operator of the helicopter business doesn't have the same concerns that they did previously, and that they've been addressed.
Are there questions in regards to this application? Deputy Mayor?
Do we know the scope of what the intention is as far as the expansion of this? I know what we have in front of us, you know, the thirty-eight thousand we have on propane storage tank. Is there, is this the beginning? Or is this everything that they want to do at once?
Through you, Your Worship. It's my understanding that this is what's in front of us. We don't have any proposed plans, or we can't understand the future expansion. That hasn't been brought forward through any discussions. So, as far as I'm aware, this is what the proposed development is.
Are there questions or concerns? Questions from the public? If you'd like to come forward and state your... Oh, sorry, Councillor Fodey. Councillor Gurrell, you go ahead, and then I'll ask. I...
Through you, Your Worship. Just one quick question. The diagrams that I had in my presentation is that? What is being presented, or is that a conceptual idea? Of the language of the property? So, you see, they use about three fifths of that property.
Through you, Your Worship. That's what's proposed right now. This, it's important to know that this would also be subject to site plan control. So, that would be part of the site plan control agreement, and it would be registered against the title of the property. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. I'm just...
Please come forward and state your name.
Deputy Jerry. Good evening. Thank you, councillors, mayor. My name is Jerry Wickowitz. I'm one of the many volunteers of the Gannonackway District Humane Society. We were, thanks to the Royal Mail, the invitation for the January sixth meeting, it was too late for us to be here to voice our concerns. We've heard about this a while back from second-hand information that this was coming. And that raised concerns for us because of the proximity. We're going to be, from the biggest tank of thirty thousand gallons of propane are building six, two-hundred-and-fifty feet away. So, that's, that actually makes everyone nervous. I've spoken to the fire chief back in, I believe, November. He assured me that it'll be built to, facilities approved, it'll be built to higher standards. Oil refineries are built at a higher standard, and history tells us accidents happen. Heaven forbid if something like that happened. But it already raised concerns with our volunteers. We have every day, minimum six volunteers working at the facility during the day and at night. We have volunteers come in to administer medication, which would be after the facility is closed, after the propane distribution is closed. One of the volunteers, or many of the volunteers asked us when we shared this, that, "So, what happens if there's a fire? How do we escape? What's our escape?" Being that close, two-hundred-and-fifty feet, doesn't give you much time. And I know it's going to be built to the highest standard, but I mean, accidents would happen. That's why they call them accidents. So, I'm sure that, as I represent the voices of our volunteers, that this facility is likely to have some type of safety measures for their employees in the event of an explosion. And you don't have time, you won't have time to run to a car, you won't even know where to go. So, we would, we are an all-volunteer organization. Self-financing through volunteer fundraising. We cannot afford to build any kind of security measures that this facility will have. So, before you approve this rezoning, on behalf of the volunteers, I'd like you to think about the risk, the liability that this facility is going to pose to us that are two-hundred-and-fifty feet away. We have large of risk, because we will not have the capacity, financial capacity, to build the necessary measures to protect ourselves and our volunteers.
Councillor Fodey?
Thank you, Your Worship. Your measurement of two-hundred-and-fifty feet is from your building to their property line?
I just used this, the legend on this, and I'm just looking, I'm assuming that this is the scale, because it shows the scale, so I just did the rough measurement to where the larger storage is going to be. The actual refueling is a hundred-and-fifty feet. And the trucks, the way the driveway will be going through, it'll be like fifty to sixty feet from the building, from the south end of the building. The fully-fueled tankers will be going by. And just imagine that they collide. I mean, are we willing to put people's lives at risk? Just simply, just giving them the... I mean, what we're asking for is, if you're going to approve, I think there's going to, has to be some kind of ownership on the township and the builder to help us build the same safety measures that they will be implementing in their facilities, because we can't afford it.
Councillor, Deputy Mayor? And then Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. As far as TSSA is the overriding body who looks after propane in Ontario. And I certainly believe that they would not allow a facility to operate unsafely, number one. Number two, propane is actually one of the safest fuels that we have in the industry. And I have not, I've not heard of very many propane accidents in regards to the industry in Ontario. I'm sure there are, have been a few, but I just think it's the illness of the company that when they put the money into it, they have to comply with the rules or regulations that are set forward for them, which would provide safety for their neighbors and for you as well.
Just as a, just as an addendum to your comment, when the group came to present to us, they made it abundantly clear of the double safety valves that were in place in regards to, if one fails, there's a secondary valve in place to catch it. And it's all checked on a systematic basis, on a regular basis. I'm trying to remember the timeframe, but I remember thinking that's quite often. Like, it's not something they do on an annual basis. Like, it was, I want to say, a week later, month later. Anyways. The point being made, as far as the safety is concerned, while I appreciate the volunteers and their safety, absolutely. This facility also is going to employ, I believe, six to ten individuals as well. So, I'm fairly certain they would not put their own employees at risk, obviously. But that, that's why the stringent measures are in place. As far as assisting the Humane Society in regards to training their, or having the same sort of training how to respond to an event, I can't imagine, and I won't speak on behalf of the business, but I can't imagine that they would not offer their training or show you how they train their individuals to respond to, meaning, how do you get away in a certain period of time and all that sort of stuff? I'm maybe oversimplifying things, but any good citizen and any good business, I'm sure would be happy to share that safety training. But that is up to the individual business. Councillor Fodey?
Thank you, Your Worship. Your concerns are valid. And as mentioned by the mayor, was one of the statements I was going to make. You can rest for sure that this business is just as concerned about their employees as you are for yourself, and they're at closer proximity than you would be. The other point I want to make, our own fire chief was present at the original presentation. He had no questions or concerns about this accreditation of this property or the facility for which it was going to use. With regards to your proximity of trucks, frankly, you're in that liability zone every single day with your distance by Route 32. You have fuel trucks, propane trucks, and most of them are probably on the...
Not at the same frequency.
Pardon me?
Not at the same frequency.
The frequency is, you know, I take that into a point. But I personally have handled, in my career, that's what I've done for a living, is handle hazardous material. I feel much safer at ten hundred point mile an hour. That would be a ditch.
So, if I may, just to respond to your, to your point about that they wouldn't be putting, the business wouldn't be putting their employees at risk? Of course they wouldn't. They will build the necessary measures that we cannot do this thing. It's more than training, the mayor, because our, the challenge we have with our volunteers is, is a high rotation, whoever can come, so it's not the regular employees we can train. Two months later, we have new people or the ones that have been trained, but because that's just, just a term that we have to experience, because it is a volunteer organization. So, what we're asking for is that some direction from the township to the business, that there's a condition that comes with the zoning. Because we don't want to be knocking on their door with our hands out and saying, "Can you help us?" We don't have the financial means to build what this business will do. And they will protect the employees. I'm quite sure of that. But we cannot provide the same level of protection. And we're worried about more than training, because if an explosion happens, and it's hap, it has happened. I mean, refineries have had major accidents. We don't want that. But we also cannot afford to build the same safety measures to protect our employees, our volunteers, the way that this business will protect. They have insurance, they have other means of protecting. We don't. So, that's really the point I make.
Councillor, just one second. I'll recognize Matt Planner, and then we'll go to Councillor O'Keefe. And then if you need to make any further points, Councillor Fodey? Go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. I was just going to point out, as has already been identified, the safety measures that have been discussed as it relates to this that were presented to us by the applicant, the safety measures are all designed into the plant on the site. If you look at the actual site plan, it's not that there's fencing or compounding around any of the property. There are areas of chain link fence and security areas, but there's no fire fences or, or anything of those means. They do explain that the, there is a review, and it's through TSSA in terms of what measures they're required to have on the site, what training. So, I mean, I think that we could ask the applicant to speak with the Humane Society in terms of assisting them and understanding, but in terms of requiring them to construct anything or contribute to anything off-site, that's beyond the scope of the Planning Act and the authority in terms of imposing zoning.
Thank you for the clarification. Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Your Worship. And just for the, for general knowledge, I quickly did a search, and there was a large explosion in Northwark on August eighth, two thousand and four. And it appeared to have been caused by tank-to-tank transfers between trucks and faulty maintenance on the plant hoses. It was well, well looked into, but there does not seem to have been another storage facility or refinery explosion in Ontario since that time. It was an incident somebody had a propane canister in this sea container that went off for some reason, but not in storage sites as we've, as we've been considering here, and certainly not in refineries in east Ontario that I can find very quickly.
Councillor Fodey?
Thank you, Your Worship. That incident, Councillor O'Keefe is referring to, in Toronto, was used as an example to most hazardous goods carriers in Canada. And if I'm not mistaken, I think if you look back on the, the in-depth investigation of that, that was caused by a smoking employee while transferring. I think they nailed that down to he was smoking on site, which is absolutely normal. Getting back to tonight's reality with regards to the Humane Society, the owner of this facility, it's not upon them to construct anything. A, they wouldn't possibly, will build anything that withstands whatever blast may occur, or has to be, you know, a small propane tank, like a barbecue tank, in essence. But I would say to you that I think I am safe in speaking on behalf of our township volunteer firefighters, that perhaps we could speak to our fire department, and then speak to your volunteers, or have you step next door to the fire station and undergo some understanding of, you know, what may or may not happen, and the consequences. But as for, you know, I think you're looking for a safety net to prevent you from what may occur. I don't think that could ever happen, to be honest. I don't think we could build, or the planner, the owner, or anyone else could possibly... I don't think that could ever happen, to be honest. I don't think we could build, or the planner, or the owner, or anyone else could possibly, you know, circumvent, uh, what could happen.
I can appreciate it, but, sorry, from our perspective, don't want to be argumentative here, but what we're seeing is, uh, we're zoning an area where, yes, it's going to be, everybody says it's going to be safe, but it's going to be a ticking time bomb sitting 250 feet away from our, and could be smoking, could be, that's why we call it an accident. Nobody can tell me here, or us, 100% that for the next 100 years, nothing will happen there. Nobody can, even the fire chief.
Deputy Mayor?
Exactly. It's 50/50. You, you, you don't know. You could walk in there right now and get hit by a truck. I mean, that's life.
Counselor Jameson?
Uh, I appreciate what I'm hearing from our neighbors. Uh, and I understand that we don't have a lot of wiggle room in respect with the move here because of the nature of the planning. So I guess really from my point, Your Worship, I'm suggesting that our planning department work with the owners to work with the neighbors to ensure that they are in full understanding of, the neighbors are, as well as the company, in full understanding of people's concern for their risk, and if there are ways that this company which understands the business better than any of us around this table, uh, except for the planner, of course, uh, can in some way mitigate the concerns of all of the neighbors, not just, not just, uh, Humane Society. It would go a long way to certainly satisfying that we've done the due diligence surrounding these concerns within the framework we can do.
Thank you. Do you have a concern, sir?
Yeah, yeah, um, I was here a year ago. You may remember Jim Douglas, I'm sorry, I did. Uh, the reason that I'm concerned, I personally was driving on Highway 2 between Trenton and Brighton, and the Gero, Gero propane tank exploded. It put me into the ditch. So personally, I've been affected by this. I mean, it's not just, in my mind, it's not just a thing that could happen. It actually happened. I was into the ditch because it exploded as I was driving along Highway 2 between Brighton and Trenton. So I've gone through that. Volunteers have said to me, I'm not sure I want to be here after the summer. Because if that bomb is sitting next, and like you say, and everybody expects, it's safety measured, you name it. But they see that bomb sitting next to us, they're hesitant to be in that shelter. Do I want to risk my life? Or the time that that accident, as Jerry said, is going to happen? And we could potentially lose volunteers because of it. So there are those implications. It's not something easy to, to deal with. Me personally, because I've experienced it, and also the volunteers, because of what they anticipate from it, even though it's, you know, like you said, 50/50. It could be an accident. We hope it never happens, but when it does, the implications are bad, because it probably flattens shelter and whoever's there.
Sir, can you state your name again for the, for the?
Jim, Jim Douglas.
Jim Douglas. I have to jump over, I apologize. Uh, Counselor Cody, you have something to add?
Yes, I do, Your Worship. My question to the planner, did this application not pass every criteria that was asked of it?
Through you, Worship, um, this application is consistent with the policies of our official plan for allowing an industrial use in the rural area. Um, in terms of meeting at the actual buildout of the site, there's a lot of other regulations that they would have to follow in with whether they're even allowed to build, and we will require those for the set up and cleanup process.
Right. My point is, we can sit here soft-hearted and vote this down, but you should be deal with the facts. The facts are, the application is stamped off by every organization that, that they have to deal with. Quite frankly, personally, I can't see where I will turn it down when, when all the hoops and hurdles that are required to meet are met.
We're not asking it to be turned down, what we're asking is assistance from either the township and/or the builder, because we don't have the same capacity to protect our volunteers through whatever measures we need. We don't even understand what the facility will look like, because we missed the January 6 meeting. So we're, we're kind of in a catch-up mode, and we're the most affected because we're close by. So what we're looking for is, is there a way that the township can put a condition that they will at least offer some assistance to us? Because, you know, we don't want to be, as Jim says, start losing volunteers because they're afraid.
So I think, so I think it was made clear by the, the director of planning that there is no way for us to impose, uh, an obligation other than what is required for safety mechanisms by the TSSA and through the planning act. So there, there's no, nothing precluding us from asking them to work with you and keep you informed and so on and so forth, but there is nothing for us to, uh, impose further sanctions on them as far as building, and I'm using probably incorrect terminology, but like a blast wall or something to that effect, to protect, uh, the neighbors on any side, because there's a 401 that's running just to the, the south of the, of the, uh, facility as well. Um, but that, I think it was noted by the planner that she would be willing to speak to the, to the people in regards to the safety concerns of the neighbors, and that share their best practices and, and figure out if anything can be done to assist the training of volunteers for safety mechanisms. That planner.
Just add to that, if, if there was something such as a blast wall or burping or something, some type of measure required as a component of the safety of this site, it would have to be designed and built into this site, because we would have no control to enforce or require them to maintain that over the long term off this property. So that isn't something that's been identified at this point. If there are any safety measures that are identified by the TSSA through their review that are required, as I mentioned, it would be required to be included in this site plan control. Thank you, Matt Planer. Any further questions or any other concerns from the gallery? Any other questions from counselors? Counselor Cody?
Just to comment, Your Worship. Your fears and, and such are legitimate. I don't think it's too much to ask of us to guide our fire department to, uh, to invite you in and, and make you aware of, of the training they have with these types of products. I, I think that's easy enough to do, especially, but, sorry, especially given the fact that Fire Station 3 would be a thousand yards away from you.
That's a very good suggestion. Thank you, Counselor Cody. So that we could actually have authority to do, to direct the fire chief to make them aware. Okay, as far as the motion that's on the floor, moved by Counselor Cody and seconded by Counselor Jameson, do I need to reread the motion or look at it? All those in favor of the motion on the floor? All those opposed? Carry. Next, planning report on the docket is Community Business Services Report for CBS dash 004 dash 20 for municipal modernization funding. The motion is forwarded by Counselor Jameson, seconded by Counselor Cody, that the Committee of the Hall recommends that Council direct staff to implement the initiatives identified by the Committee of the Hall in their meeting February 3rd, 2020, to realize the cost efficiency of modernization of function and funding under the municipal modernization program. Counselor Cody?
Thank you, Worship. I personally would like to see this, this whole discussion pulled. We've had this money in our hands since last March. This is the first time it's came to us. I, I have a problem as a council. This money was given to us as a council. I have read on numerous occasions where the county has plans to, uh, utilize the monies on a percentile basis from the various jurisdictions that sit at the county's council. I, for one, would like to be able to discuss right here on this table, the subject of $632,000, $38,000. I have to check my notes here. Uh, I'm not in favor of moving forward with the discussion on this, uh, on anything being used on this monies until we discuss it amongst ourselves.
So just to be clear, that's why it's come to council. This is Committee of the Hall. So the report was brought, uh, just to actually begin the conversation. These were suggestions made by staff members based on what their needs were and what they had identified as individual, uh, initiatives, uh, in different departments that would fit within the municipal modernization funding model. Having said that, there's nothing that precludes us from directing them to spend money otherwise in other ways, uh, for other, for other initiatives that are not indicated in that, uh, particular report. Counselor Cody?
Further question? Well, they're putting you on the spot. Are we obligated to donate any of these monies to the county council for any reason?
We are not. Uh, what you are referring to, just for further clarification, is that the counties has requested that separated municipalities put money aside, um, to contribute to modernization projects that would, uh, that would affect them as well. When you're looking at, um, I think there was Regional Police Force, there was a number of different other things. They asked them to earmark a certain percentage of their, their modernization funds, because we have modernization funds as a county, and then we have modernization funds as a local municipality, but our share is already earmarked through the county portion. We've already contributed our portion, contributed our portion based on the fact that the county's got a chunk. So that's what you're referring to. We are not obligated as a municipality fully contributing.
Thank you for the clarification. I thought maybe just a misunderstanding. Like, that money was donated to us, and now that are automatically somewhat, uh, imposed into the county's hands.
And, and maybe it's further for me to clarify that, um, the modernization funding that was given to us over a year ago was literally amongst some that was dumped into our laps and, and no strings attached to people. Having said that, it was given to us for a very specific purpose, which was to streamline, find efficiencies, find ways that we could make things better, uh, for both the residents, attaching staff, for us to deliver programs more efficiently, um, or interact with our residents. And one thing that was made clear at Roma, uh, the minister was looking for movement on this as far as what, not necessarily spending the money immediately, but what are we doing to move the process forward? To go back to the point of county, um, the county has designated a municipal modernization task force, which is five individuals that were whittled down to 13, because the separated municipalities were part of that discussion. Um, but that, they were supposed to shortlist out of the big list that we made as the entire group, bring a shortlist of management projects to recommend that be moved forward at the municipal modernization task force level. Um, because as you can well imagine, having 13 politicians in the same room trying to come up with what was the priority, um, was difficult, so that's why the task force was initiated. Having said that, tomorrow after, or tomorrow morning after Committee of the Hall at county, there is a meeting of the municipal modernization task force, where they will be reporting to county, um, to, to let everybody know where they see their recommendation moving, and to get input from the county's at the hall. Counselor Cody?
Okay, that leads me to a question then. So they're obviously ahead of the game ball as compared, if you will, say, to what we are. So we could perhaps maybe take lead as to where they're going to spend their money, and would help make our decision as to what we do with ours?
Well, uh, yes and no, because the nature of the funding at the county level should be for county initiatives. This modernization funding that we have should be for more local initiatives, particularly pertaining to the township. Not to say that what they're doing at the county level don't pertain to the township, but it will be at a higher level. Uh, which is why the counties, uh, requested further, uh, funding for, um, I don't want to use the incorrect terminology, but it was about consolidation of fire services and not not merchant fire departments, but how they operate purchasing and staffing training, how they could maybe work more cohesively in an area, as in rather than working in silos within every smaller municipality. So, so, uh, that was an additional 120,000 given to county in regards to that, and they were also, again, looking to the separated municipalities to, to participate in that discussion as well. But again, that they're contributing to that process, not just through the funding that we got from county. Deputy Mayor, I need.
Thank you, Worship. And through you, it looks like we're, uh, looking at spending 392,000, but, um, you know, that's going to give us, what, 91.7, uh, well, it's better, but what bothers me is the TBDs, to be determined. So the, to be determined is, how can we approve something that we can't determine?
CAO, you have something contributing to that?
Uh, thank you, Worship, and, uh, echo what, uh, you said, Your Worship. This is, the purpose of putting this forward is to have council, uh, discuss it, uh, to, and through Committee of the Hall, and begin the discussion, uh, and talk to other CAOs, uh, the impression they have gotten. There's been a one intake and a second intake of additional modernization funding, and they're under the impression that because they haven't spent the modernization funding that was given to us with no strings attached, and doesn't, and we can hold on to it as long as we want, as long as we do that, we're not going to be getting grants under additional funding. So this, uh, report, uh, from the Director of, uh, Community Business Services, it reflects input from all senior management team and has certain hot, what we've identified as high priority. Uh, there's a remainder, uh, which is open for discussion by, by, uh, council as to whether you agree with senior management team that those are high priorities. And there's a balance. Some of them are to be determined, uh, so that the council were to direct us and say, yes, we are interested in pursuing that one. Staff will go back and come up with that uh, more detail and come up with a, an amount, so, uh, that would be the step. That's why it says TBD.
So maybe I'll ask Ms. Goodman to speak to the report and the specifics of where this came from, and that, um, maybe it'll lead us down the path of having further discussion as to where we might want to go, and if we want to support any, any of all.
Absolutely. Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, Counsel. Um, we did receive this funding last year, and in 2019, a small, uh, portion of about $32,000 was allocated at council's direction for a couple of particular projects, leading the balance of, um, I can't scroll through my, my report yet, but at the same time, about almost, uh, $500,000 or $600,000 remaining. The first four items are ones that, um, we, at the senior management team level, determined were of, uh, higher priority. Um, we do also recognize that we have an outstanding application for the second item on the list, the Fire Master Plan and Business, uh, Business Plan Risk Assessment, um, with MMAH. We followed up with them late last week, and as of yet, there is no pending announcement coming. All of the announcements that were made, such as the county's, uh, Fire Services Review, for example, all of the projects that were announced already were regional joint projects. They were individual municipalities' projects, and that those ones are currently under review now, although they don't know when the announcement will be made. Um, through the budget process, we have a lot of discussions about asset management, which is really why you see that at the top of the list. This just resources staff to ensure that the full cost of the software can be covered expeditiously, that we're engaging the right staff to work through the process within a two or three-year period. Um, again, that $204,000 would not be allocated in this particular year, but over a couple of years, but would be therefore earmarked for that allocation over the next little while. Um, communications, we understand, is something that, uh, needs a, a review, so that we have a strategy and the tools and resources to effectively engage with our municipalities. So we've taken a huge drive with the mail letter and the community newsletter, but we also recognize that our website, um, and other online platforms could probably be better used and more efficiently, so that there's dashboards, so that there's more, um, information at the residents' fingertips, that it's easier for them to find information and to engage with us through various, uh, platforms or portals. We also recognize through the budget process that the library was, um, library board, pardon me, I want to be very clear, the library board was directed to.
me, I want to be very clear, the library board was directed to complete a business plan in order to help facilitate their long-term planning and strategic initiatives, and so some funding has been allocated for that. As Deputy Mayor Laki points out, those total allocations are almost four hundred thousand dollars, and it would leave a balance of just less than a hundred thousand dollars. The list that you see following our senior management team, I'm on a couple of locations and discussed a couple of opportunities on a department, by department basis, that would provide value within their departments or of course, help realize efficiencies, items that would fall far beyond the regular operating budget or proposals there. Some of the to be determines are, and again, not all of this money would be checks going out the door right now, but as we work through asset management, for example, there might be additional modules that would help us down the road in terms of, and again, I beg your pardon, because this is not my area of expertise, but if there was a widget that could be installed on a truck that would allow them to better manage or record a certain piece of information that we could feed back into our asset management versus pieces of paper. But I think until we start to embark on that process, we don't know what those particular modules are, which is why there is a to be determined, because we might not have that information until following, we begin the process, same with some of the handheld electronic tracking, or in the case of the G I S, we don't know what a service agreement with the counties might look like. But again, the preface is that we recognize that municipalities are being urged to begin to roll out these funds so that we can realize efficiencies and better ways of doing business. The following, I mean, it's really just a list of recommendations to stimulate your conversation and discussion. That balance of remaining of almost a hundred thousand dollars, there are a couple of thoughts. You can choose something off the list, there might be another item that is of priority to council. You may choose to wait until following, see what direction the county is going, because we can piggyback on something that they're doing or take an entirely different direction. So again, these are recommendations that are made that would help in our day-to-day activities, would help us over a long-term period. We realize that some of them may have longer-term ongoing costs associated with them, for example, computer module or subscription that you may have to pay for annually, but the expectation is, is that we will find cost efficiencies as we work through the process that would offset those costs as they occur two, three, four years down the road. Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Counselor Jamison and Deputy Mayor Laki.
So, let me give you a gift. Remember the Trojan horse, wars break out. To some of these costs, especially some of the larger ones like the asset management, clearly that has to be addressed, we know that has to be addressed. And I look at that one at two hundred and four thousand, communications is the usual black hole, I know, creates a big step in that, but some of the larger ones, well, just generally the larger ones, have they been fully costed, your worship?
I believe that the Fire Master Plan was estimated previously. The asset management is definitely costed by the treasurer, so that number is, I don't want to say hard number, but a realistic number that was come up with. The communications, hundred thousand dollar budget, now, keep in mind, based on the specifics attached to that, that includes a whole website overhaul, and if any of you have had the displeasure of using our website in any recent, sorry, I hope nobody in this room is offended by that comment, but it is the most onerous, inefficient, hard, it's hard to navigate, it's difficult to find the information you want, it's not simple and straightforward. There are much better ways that we could be interfacing with our public, and this is the way that people find information. There's a reason Google exists, but the way that our website is set up, it's not easily accessible, and I agree with Counselor Jamison, when you're talking about the communications black hole, it is a black hole. But I think that one of the things that was identified, I believe during our work plan, H R review that last spring, when we were at the plant house, this was one of the things that was identified that needs to be tackled at some point in time. But if you look at it from an efficiency point of view, which is the whole reason that the modernization funds exist, the asset management, I don't think that there's any way around it, because it's one of the main stumbling blocks we continue to stumble against year over year over year, that we don't have a true handle on a lot of what we have for assets, where they are in their lifespan, where they're going, and how we budget for those costs in the end. So I think that there's great efficiency we have there. Having said that, the master plan for the fire training center and the business plan, that needs to be done regardless. It was not budgeted for, are allocated for in the budget for two thousand and twenty in any other way, shape, or form. This is an opportunity to use the modernization funds to fast track that plan. Sorry, joking around, but the library business plan for three thousand dollars, I believe that was put in there mainly because they have requested it. And again, this is just staff bringing us information for us to make a decision. So I'll recognize Deputy Mayor, you have a question or comment to make. Your question is?
Thank you, your worship. And just to make reference to the website, every council that I've been involved with has said the same thing about the website, the previous website, and we've changed it how many times in my lifetime? It's, I don't know what the answer is. Yeah, I mean, we've gone from one format to another. Like I said, every council said, oh, that website's horrible, and okay, so we go and we get somebody to change it, and it's, somebody else comes in and says, oh, that one's horrible, and that one's horrible, and that one's horrible. So how long are we going to spend money on websites until somebody's pleased? But anyway, moving on, I don't have a problem with this list, I don't have a problem spending the money. The only thing that I would ask is that we explain to the residents why. We, we know, we're told we have the information, but I think the residents need to explain, this is not free money, this is tax-free money, no matter which way you slice it, it just comes from a different, a bigger pot. So as long as we tell them what we're spending it on, why we're spending it there, that makes our job easier, because you don't really have.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Rowley, have something to add?
Thank you, your worship. And through you, I must say, when I read this report, and I have a few words I'd like to say, when I read this report, I was very disheartened. We just spent, a few days ago, not years ago, we just spent, a few days ago, we approved a very generous budget at this county, at this municipal level. And what I see here is nothing more than like a runaround, a net book, and then, we want us to open up our budget again and talk about this. Most of the items that I read on here are items that could be on a capital budget or an operational budget, and it just seems we're in a hurry to spend that money. On one hand, we're reported that we have to take care of our reserves, and I can live with our capital reserves at that point, and I just, I'm not in favor of this, I'm in favor of opening up more discussion on it, but not as agreed. An example, and this is straight out of the budget that we approved, and I said very generously, asset management software, fifty thousand dollars. No one then, also proposed for modernization funding is the asset management position at fifty grand plus sixteen thousand dollars per year, that's sixty-six thousand dollars. So as I read that two hundred and four thousand dollars, no one's given me an explanation, but is that for full-time, I mean, it says full-time, is that full-time for three years? For ten years? Annoying? So what we're doing is we're inflating. Once again, the bureaucracy is growing, and it does not make me in the least bit happy, and I will vote this down in the end with.
Counselor Jamison?
Well, my only comment really is that we just don't have enough detail. I think, I understand, having read the asset management expectations from the province is that we have a lot to do for which we will not have the funding directly, so it has, it has to come from somewhere, and it isn't all in our current budget, and there is a timeline with respect to making sure it's done so that we are on side, so we find out what's going on. As far as Fire Master Plan, again, more detail with respect to how it would work, because the staff has looked, is applied for other funding, but we know the province is running a little more slowly on things, so there is some urgency to get some of this stuff done, and I agree with that. And I apologize for all the communications black hole, and it's just, I say that with love and respect, because I come out of that black hole myself, and I understand that every time we do a website, as soon as it's done, somebody will tell you, you need to do it again, it's just, they've got us fooled on that one. Not the staff, I'm sorry, but people that sell your websites. So the reality is that I think what we're looking for is more detail that allows us to explain among ourselves what is really going on, and then also talk to our constituents on what we need to do, and not undermining the importance of almost all of these items that I understand, I just think we need a little more detail in order to.
Okay, so based on the discussion we've had to date, or so far, I think that obviously the deferral of this motion as it sits to a later date for further information is imperative, which is fine. And just for good clarification, this was requested to become, to come forward from staff, because the minister was looking for movement on how we might be spending this either now or in the future. So it was really an impetus to lay a fire under our bus to figure out what it is we want to do with it. So this is just the starting point. Deputy Ms.?
So why do we wait so long? So why do we wait so long?
That's a good question, but I would venture a guess that when the treasurer was going through our budget and going through a number of line items, finding things or not finding things, that these things floated to the surface, and that they were, there was only so much we could do with this budget that was presented, even though it was a generous budget as described by Counselor Rowell, there's still much work to be done. And I think that the discussion that has to happen around this table, and a number of people, and I'll just use asset management as a, as a goalpost, that's been discussed here a number of times, and there is money in the budget to address initial asset management, but we're talking about, this is more long-term, but I believe down the vein that you're talking about, is the further detail that is required before we say, yes, we're allocating further funding to that. Would that be correct in my assumption, before you do anything you want more specific and more details in regards to each of these things? But I guess the deferral, as per Robert's rule of order, we have to have a timeframe in reverse, but as far as like, two months down the road, we have to pick a date. Sorry, I'll allow the C A O to speak.
Thank you, your worship. I just would also ask for clarity on what we are deferring, what we are looking for was a list of priorities or to try to put some of these in a priority order of what council would like staff to go back and get further information on, or is it council's wish that we go back on these priority items and everything else on the list and do the research to get the detail and the exact pricing, which is quite a, quite a project? I'd just like clarity on, from counsel on, what we mean, what the direction is.
Counselor Pollock and Counselor Jamison and Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I opened this discussion by saying that while with this deferred, I still stand behind that, I agree with Counselor Rowell. Like Deputy Mayor Laki's question, why do we wait so long? We still have yet to hear, are we under a time frame? When those are the questions we need answered, the only thing I see here tonight that I would check off and say, go ahead and do it, is the library business plan. That has to be done. We've got a library that we literally put on hold until they answer to us? Check off the three thousand dollars for that business plan, get the library going in the direction they need to go. As for the rest and what time frames, I applaud the staff for coming up with all these ideas, but I am in no way, shape, or form, I'm going to okay tonight where these monies are going to go. This might be the wish list, and where it's going to go eventually, but to scoop this all under one bull's-eye pass in one motion, I'm not going to.
Counselor Jamison?
Well, to the C A O's question, I think at a certain point, the staff has to do the numbers on each one of these projects in some detail, no matter what, no matter what direction you give council. I respect the prioritization that appears here, but I personally would like to see, I understand the priorities and the next of the priorities are unfunny to call, but I would like, think we would be better to, to address these projects with more detailed costing. And the reason I say that is because we've come off a period of time, unnecessarily our time, where some things just went ahead and you paid an awful price, and I'm just saying, let's make sure everybody is looking good when we get to the point where we spend this money and not a seat to a third-party expectation.
So the way that it would work as far as deferral would be, this, the way this motion is written, is that we would accept the report as is and before it as is. So the deferral, we can defeat the motion, we can leave it on the table, defeat it, and then bring a subsequent motion back by council members about specific, about specific, you know, initiatives. Okay. So Counselor Rowell, Counselor Wilkie, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, through you, your worship, and exactly to the points you just raised, I would prefer to defeat this motion as written, and I would like to break those units down and run against those four units, shall I say?
For separate motions.
Yes, I would, I would like separate discussion, and therefore, I would also like a separate staff presentation on each of those. Once again, one of them is just inflating, and that's the, asset management is probably the most key to me, and all I see there is a job, frankly, and some stuff, nothing is explained to me there. It's a job. Is it going to be a part-time job? Full-time job? Thank you.
So, sorry, Counselor Wilkie and Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship, and to my colleagues and the staff, when I saw this, I thought this is more of an estimate than important, and it needed more discussion. To that end, and here what some of my colleagues have said, and it's not the right place to put it in the agenda, but I did staff a motion, a proposed motion, to move the library budget ahead, because it wasn't me who thinks that we have to write it, I believe that's on agenda later on. I did send it in.
Notice of motion.
Sorry?
It's notice of motion.
Notice of motion.
Okay.
That can be dealt with, and then done next week.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. We passed the budget. It took us a couple of months to spend fourteen thousand dollars, or fourteen million dollars. You're asking us since Thursday to spend half a million dollars, I don't think that's fair at all. You're right, I think it needs to be deferred. We did, I agree with Counselor Pollock, we did ask the library to come up to a certain standard, and to do that, I think they need our help, and this is the way to do it. So I would like to defer all but, and I understand the asset management as well, and that's, I think, a discussion that maybe we need, but to spend half a million dollars based on information we were given Thursday, I'm not doing it, sorry.
So maybe I'll go back procedurally, because if we defeat this and then there's a notice of motion for the library board that's sufficient, saves money and water, so it just allows us to come back on an individual basis with some of the larger projects that we're working on right now. Would that be, okay. Madam Treasurer?
Through you, your worship, just like to make a comment, we would have been happy to address this money. We would have been happy to address this money during the budget process, but I think staff's understanding of the intention of the money at that time was that we weren't in a huge rush to spend it after hearing the official government's comments that they're looking for municipality to be spending that money. That is the only reason that triggered this report to come forward. We understand its high level, and that was the point of it as well, was just to try, as you mentioned, bring something forward that would start the conversation, give us some idea of where council might wish us to move. However, I don't think any of the senior staff were dead set on spending all this money. I think we were just trying to record it before they would start that conversation.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. So I'm going to leave, I'm going to stop the conversation at this because I think we've beaten this horse, and I get the indication that we're going to defeat motion any phase, and then we'll move forward on an individual basis as discussed. So the motion that's on the floor moved by Council Jacobson, seconded by Council Foddy, that Committee of the Hall recommends that council staff to implement the initiatives that identified by Committee of the Hall in their meeting February 3, 2020, to realize the cost efficiencies and modernization of function funded under the municipal modernization program. Oh, sorry, municipal modernization program. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, call a question. All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, carry. Sorry. Council Jacobson?
Just trying, I missed this, and I apologize. Just a clarification on Councilor Foddy's notice of motion.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
We're there's a notice of motion, which is number seven on the agenda. We're almost there. And he can make the, he can make the notice of motion, and then you can throw something out. I need to. Okay. So the next item on the agenda. Community Business Services Report Number CBS-05-20, Visitor Center Memorandum of Understanding of the Town of Gannon Oakway. Moved by Council Foddy, seconded by Council Jacobson, that the Committee of the Hall recommends that council authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding, and review with the Town of Gannon Oakway formalized financial commitment to tourism support via the visitor center for one year, for a one-year term. Discussion on this motion. Deputy Mayor?
We just asked staff just to clarify, because this is something that is, is not new. It's a regular occurrence, and it's our, it's our due diligence to support it.
Director. Yes, absolutely, and thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through you, Your Worship. This is an agreement that we've had for a number of years, as I understand it, with the Town of Gannon Oakway. They provide the service kind of on our behalf or in partnership with the municipality. They provide a level of service that we simply couldn't for the $11,000 or $12,000 that we're investing in this way in terms of a team of eight, nine, 10 summer students. They're staffing multiple locations. In fact, they contribute to staffing, pardon me, training our staff, for example, that work at the Seals Bay Municipal Harbor, at Candor's Park, so that we're providing a cohesive and consistent tourism sort of package or portfolio for guests to our area. Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Council Foddy?
Thank you, Your Worship. Is this dollar by $12,000 the same amount of money that's been up previous years or has just increased?
Through you, Your Worship, it has gone up by $1,000, which was discussed last year when we entered into the agreement that based on numbers which are strummed, that we would increase that amount, and it was included in this year's budget that was approved. And I don't believe that they had asked for an increase for a significant amount of time, I would say five to seven years or something to that effect. So that was why it was reviewed at that time and recommended as such. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, who will call a question? All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, carry. Okay. Number six, other business? Any other business? Council Foddy?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's been brought to my attention that the way that our township issues the sellers of garbage tags is questionable at best. It seems to me that, or it's been brought to my attention, it seems to be a charity thing, if you will, of who's allowed to sell garbage tags in this township and who is not. After asking a few questions, that is the case. We've had, we've had residents or businesses in this township be denied the ability to sell garbage tags. And to the point of some of these people that I've asked, they even have to turn around and shamefully direct their customers to the opposition, if you will, to buy garbage tags. I had a real problem with this. I actually thought it was a joke when it was first brought to me. So I'll simplify it this way. I don't think we should exclude any business in our township that's paying taxes into our township as a business from selling garbage tags if they wish. They make a small monetary amount off each tag, but I don't think there should be any use of them again charity picking. I think we should broad-based this if a business wants to sell garbage tags, let them.
Council Foddy?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's been brought to my attention that the way that our township issues the sellers of garbage tags is questionable at best. It seems to me that, or it's been brought to my attention, it seems to be a charity thing, if you will, of who's allowed to sell garbage tags in this township and who is not. After asking a few questions, that is the case. We've had, we've had residents or businesses in this township be denied the ability to sell garbage tags. And to the point of some of these people that I've asked, they even have to turn around and shamefully direct their customers to the opposition, if you will, to buy garbage tags. I had a real problem with this. I actually thought it was a joke when it was first brought to me. So I'll simplify it this way. I don't think we should exclude any business in our township that's paying taxes into our township as a business from selling garbage tags if they wish. They make a small monetary amount off each tag, but I don't think there should be any use of them again charity picking. I think we should broad-base this if a business wants to sell garbage tags, let them.
Council Foddy?
Thank you, Your Worship, and to support Council Foddy's point of view, there's a business in Linder's that was discriminated against in this regard, and that business also saw itself as a community service providing these tags. And so I have heard this directly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor, you have something to add?
I as well, and thank you, Councilor Foddy, for bringing that up.
Well, I'm very glad that this has been brought forward because, I'll be honest, I have not heard these things. I guess I made an assumption that many years ago, there was a competition or an application process that happened, and that that's why things are sold in certain spots, but I stand corrected, and we can definitely look into that process. Madam Treasurer, do you have any specifics on that, or does anybody have any institutional knowledge in regards to this? Okay. Madam Treasurer?
Through you, Your Worship, I understand that there probably should be a policy around this issue, but I don't know what that policy is, and I'm not sure if we even have a policy at this point.
Sierra?
I am, should it sound like I'm, yes, although this is the first that I've heard of any complaints, I don't, I just ask if any of this has been brought forward to staff before by any member of council.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, it has.
Previous council?
I don't want to mention names, but there's been other issues surrounding the sale of the tags and our delivery of the tags and certain other things, and I'm not eligible to say in public, so.
I was just kind of aware of the delivery and the sale of tags, but I, what I'm asking about is the method by which they were chosen. Has that come up in the last year, say, or in this council?
I don't believe it's come up at this council. Deputy Mayor, can you speak to whether it's come up at previous councils?
No, not at council. The thing is, we brought this to staff's attention, but never, never come to council table.
Well, it's at the council table now, so I don't imagine that it's left under the rug. Deputy Mayor, sorry, yeah, Council Foddy, and then we'll move forward from this.
Do we need a motion to do this, or is this an in-house?
Deputy Sierra?
It's something that senior management's talked about, and that we don't have a procedure for identifying, but I think it would help for a motion from council to direct staff to look into the policy by which these tags are allocated, so we can bring it back to council.
Under number seven, you're going to make a notice of motion. Ms. Council Foddy?
I will. But just clarification, does seller of the tags not have to pay upfront for them, like any individual would be when they buy the tags? And I was on the understanding that when you go and purchase tags from the township, you pay for them upfront. It's your responsibility to recoup the money and sell the tags. Is that right?
Madam Treasurer, I believe she, her point earlier that there's no policy at this point in time, so I don't know.
Through you, Your Worship, I'm not familiar firsthand with this process. I haven't dealt with it firsthand, so I can't speak to it, opt to get to it.
So we'll speak to the tax clerk who monitors this, I believe, and then we'll have that. Sierra, you have information?
I think all of that information, Your Worship, is available, and there's, there's something that will bring the detail back to council, or to what other municipalities do, how they allocate it, and, or the analysis.
So Council Foddy, you'll be making notice of motion, move to the next, to council meeting next Monday night in regards to this process?
If that's what's required, yes. In all due respect, I don't care what other council is doing, what other municipalities do, we have a number of businesses here who don't want to send their customers to the opposition to buy garbage tags when in fact they would like to sell it themselves. And they're not going to get rich doing it, as one gentleman said to me, he said, I'm providing my customers with another service. And if that's what they want to do, well, they'll have that. And if, you know, hypothetically, we sell $10,000 for the garbage tags and they don't recoup their money for a year, it's not less than us worrying, but we'll have the $10,000 upfront.
Duly noted, so that will come forward as a notice of motion here in, any other business?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, and then Council Jacobson, and then the council.
Okay, and Council Foddy not bringing that forward tonight as a notice of motion?
Right, the notice of motion is next on the agenda.
Right.
So I'm just going to tidy this up, make sure there's no other business, and then we'll go with a notice of motion. Thank you very much. Council Jacobson?
So maybe it's just because I'm coming off three hard days for us, but just circle back to the discussion about the modernization investment that we are deferring or we have defeated to look at it later. As a result, it seems of some pressure from elsewhere, we found ourselves in a situation where we're looking at the kind of thing we've been trying to avoid, and that is making very quick decisions on matters that require more time and thought. And in fact, it has the potential, under these circumstances, to put a division between council and staff. Staff is simply trying to respond from what I'm gathering from this, pressure coming from elsewhere. We've gotten this far without going over the edge, and I would appreciate it if we all took a step back from this and realized that the staff, we, the councilors, is willing to work with staff on modernization as long as we know what we're doing. And I think that we were not given the opportunity, and it doesn't sound like staff has really given the opportunity to make it work either. So moving forward, that's my only plea.
Any further other business before we move on the agenda? Council Foddy?
Thank you, Your Worship. And this, I'd be a trifle sensitive, but coming out of the annual general meeting for the CRCA, where I picked up another job of being the representative on the Frontline Arch Bias here, as well as the source protection, water source protection, one of the issues that they raised, and they seem, I think, had a very good plan, if you remember, we talked about developing our HR program in case of staff complaints against superior, and how that would work, and we've heard it, it never meant further. And the issue was, quite frankly, if somebody, perhaps a director, perhaps someone just under director, had a problem, someone's appeared to them, and the HR person couldn't deal with it, how was it dealt with? Now, there's been some very unfortunate history in this building. What the CRCA came up with is if it's something the HR staff can't handle, there's a committee of council that the person can go to. And the committee of council can make a recommendation, or can say, no, it needs to go before the poll. I thought that was very good. It provided a certain amount of distance, it provided a certain amount of objectivity, and I'd like to revisit those issues at some point in the future, and I think that would be the proposal I would make along those lines, to develop along that model.
So I'm just taking a note to the clerk asking her to put it on the action list because the, I believe the whistle law or policy that you're referring to, one of the first things that we discussed as this council, was deferred in regards to legal matters, and it's still on the action plan, but that we could have further discussion in regards to the process in place.
Wasn't just, it isn't just an issue of whistle laws, of course, it's workplace issues. Okay, thank you.
Any further other business? Council Foddy?
Thank you, Your Worship. A couple of things here. On our current township website, I noticed here lately we've been promoting businesses or whatever outside of our own jurisdiction. I've got nothing against other jurisdictions. Case in point, Gannon Oakway, Rio District High School. Great entities both, neither one would pay taxes here. I would like to know what, what makes this happen, and better still, I've even had two or three businesses asking here in the last few days, what's it take to get the free promotion?
Ms. Goodman, do you like to speak to that?
I would actually just like to reference the comment of the Rio District High School. Students in the north end of our municipality attend that school, my son being one of them, so we think that that's important information to share across the community, given that it does impact residents in the north end. As far as Gannon Brewery is concerned, I believe that has a lot to do with the reciprocal arrangement we've had in regards to the Rite Grant and the business chronicles. I noticed that the Town of Gannon Oakway was advertising Frost Fest on the weekend, so I think it has a lot to do with that sort of thing. I understand your concern in regards to promoting businesses outside of the township, but I believe that it's, it's a reciprocal agreement, if you will, that we promote them, they promote us, whether it's free family fun, like Frost Fest, but I believe that they were, Town of Gannon Oakway was advertising Furnace Falls as well as the Great Gecko not too long ago. So I think that's more of a reciprocal thing, just because they are, we, they are working together in regards to building business for us.
Okay, well, further, that's what I was hoping to hear, that's why I brought this up for discussion tonight. What I'd like to see is to take that same promotional site and welcome everybody's input and tell them why we're doing what we're doing, because there's all a little confusion there to some people.
Well, I think it's also certain businesses that may or may, may feel left out of this process, and that's very likely, but having said that, there's people who have made an effort to become involved in the process too. So part of the reason they're being promoted is because they've put in applications for business chronicles and been part of other events chambers, what have you, so, but I think that it's a, it's a good thing of note that maybe we can be reaching out to our businesses more proactively, and I believe that was something that we had not tasked the Economic Development Committee with, but we're hoping that maybe the Economic Development Committee could assist us in creating that bridge with some of our businesses that may or may not be involved with what's going on. Council Foddy, go.
Okay, I do, two more points here I want to make. I was going to mention here tonight that a theme of mine would be to revamp the website. Deputy Mayor Lackey brought a good point that maybe perhaps virtually every council in the past has tried to do so. I can see why, after looking at our website, I can see why each one must be doing, it's pathetic. It does need redoing, and maybe the ones before that, they were accurate as well. Having said that, I was one of the ones that voted against the money here just a few minutes ago to do it, so I'll regress. The only other point I want to make, there's been a lot of this stuff in the township, that we have no outside rank over here this year. I think we have ample staff, both in the Recreation Department and Works Department, to make that happen, and I think we need to fix this before next November.
Sorry, the rank, oh, the outside rank, sorry.
The outside rank. The outside rank, the outside hockey rink that's always been over here. It's usually done by the Lake Arrow Mountains. I know Deputy Mayor Lackey has spent many a cool day over there flooding and scraping.
All weekend.
This past weekend? So it's there now. We can play tonight?
Well, the hundred plus one today.
Well, and I think that's been the major issue along this year as the.
I realize that, but, but, you know, we have to answer the residents when they missed an opportunity in their eyes right after New Year's, if there was maybe a 10-day to a week period. I understand that our fluctuating temperatures are like a yoke, but in the one comment made to me, it's pretty hard to make the rain when the boards aren't even up.
There are no boards. Is that correct? Is that what you told me? I've never known that.
Yeah, there are no boards, and we have reached out to other municipalities and, um, so far, uh, there's only been one day for one municipality, two days where they were able to use it in another municipality. So you know what? Uh, it just hasn't been the year. And to be horribly honest, the color that was painted for the pickleball courts, as soon as the sun comes out, it's gone.
So if, if you're hearing feedback from residents in regards to why isn't it up, please direct them to, maybe we could put something up on the website, uh, one of those bars that pop up just saying, you know, unfortunately, due to unseasonably high temperatures, it's not conducive to making hikes and that we apologize, but we're not, we're not in control of the weather gap, if you will. So, Deputy Mayor?
I've, uh, I've done what we had done in the past. We don't need those boards. They were ridiculous. They made us small laser, so I made two big ones like we used to do with a divider in the middle. Uh, but like I said, I've been over there, spent the whole weekend, and I might have stolen a temperature tracker. Anyway, it's cleaned off and flooded a couple times, so hopefully we get the right weather. I can flood again.
See you. Something else?
Uh, thank you, worship. And Ms. Goodman, our Director of Community Business Services has been on top of this and discussing it with uh, with Deputy Mayor, and that is quite accurate. And one, one time or is good to ask our neighbors what they're doing and find out that they've skated once, maybe skated twice. And so we're, we're in this boat. But I would agree that perhaps a notification on the website to to let people know that we don't have a ring because of the weather.
Seems redundant, but sometimes communication is key. Communication lack will stretch.
I'll still do website.
Come closer to website. Thank you. Uh, Councilor Brown?
Uh, through you, worship, but I apologize. Uh, one of my constituents received in the mail some time ago uh, from Take Action on Radon.ca, and I hadn't seen it before, so I went on the website. And it appears that a community, a municipality can participate by getting 100 of these radon test kits. And I don't know if it's something we would like to participate in as a municipality. You can buy them individually, of course. And I know what they're trying to do with Surph Health Canada, and having read the website, it would appear to be Health Canada is making an effort to, uh, do, uh, make a strike, if you will, and of course they're using the municipalities to do so.
Ms. Goodman, have you heard of this initiative before? Oh, Marty, Madam President?
Thank you, through your worship. Uh, the Kingston Front Athletics and Addington Health Unit has done a study and has identified that radon is a challenge in the area of the city that, or Front Athletics in Addington. The health unit here has identified that it's something that needs further review. What it means is there are really good measures that can be taken or can be required if radon is identified as a problem. So having the radon testing done will provide the library or the knowledge base that's necessary to determine if radon is a problem or not. So it is something that we have considered. We haven't looked into the costs of the tests or what it would take to actually bring in them into the office, but it is something that the Chief Building Official and I have had some discussions about. So we could look into it further with some information back.
Thanks for that.
Thank you for bringing that forward. I looked at the wrong person. I apologize. I was thinking Community Services and it's billing. I apologize. Any further other business? Seeing none, notices of motion. You've been sitting there all night.
Thank you, worship. Uh, just a bit of background first. This, um, planning function that the library has, it seems not to have. And the budget's been bounced and there's been a lot of frustrations. And we've compared apples to apples and looked at other libraries. There seems to be an ability to get consulting out of, solves itself through the library services to, uh, to assist in this. And for a relatively small amount of money, this can be expedited. There doesn't seem to be any other solution in the conference, and I know there's at least a few questions out there for me. Maybe the clerk has the draft motion. No, exactly.
So essentially, you're going to bring a notice of motion, are you bringing a motion forward at the next meeting in regards to supporting the $3,000 ask from the Library Board to do strategic planning?
Yes, and parse it out because that is an issue with many things here. I've heard two figures to get this consultant. One is $1,000, one is $1,200. Then by my own calculation, it would cost about $500 or $600 to do a survey, which should be part of it. And then there's a little bit of fudge in there because of, there may be requirements for further trading both for board members and staff.
So that's where the feedback numbers come from?
It's hard to, it's hard to put an exact division on it right now, but perhaps.
But this is something we can further discuss at the time of motion. If you'd like to add something?
If I need to, I certainly would support the notice of motion, but there's a couple of things about this. We did approve up to $450,900 to the library, and they have never spent that kind of money before. So one wonders whether we should be taking it out of the modernization fund. Having said that, I, I kind of support that motion because I think we need to push the library to the next stage. It's not a question of supporting it. It's a question of pushing it. So I appreciate the Director Goodman brought this idea to us. Uh, it's a good idea and also the opportunity to sit down with Rio Lakes Public Library people to discuss what they have been doing where this came from. So that's in itself positive. But I would like to hear from Councilor O'Keefe, um, next meeting with respect to, we passed the motion that supported the library to a large amount of money. And then within two days, the library advised that they were going to cancel all their programs, for which I, I'm not sure if there was a board meeting, and then suddenly that was rescinded. And then subsequent to that, we have all received, some of us more so, chastising emails, I'll use that word, that somehow council is not supporting the library. I would like to know where that's coming from and why. And I also believe that there should be some mitigation to the situation where we're being accused of not supporting the library, and I'd like to know where that's coming from. On the positive side, I'll end with this. Two members of the board attended the session in Kingston, provided by an organization that I'm a member of the board of that does strategic planning exercises. And both of them circled back to me and said how pleased they were and what a much greater understanding they have of some of the challenges they have. So I think there's good news. But on the other hand, in the meantime, there appears to be, I'll put it this way, the tail wagging the dog. And I'd like to know why the council is being accused of not supporting the library when that simply isn't true. So those questions need to be answered before we.
Counselor?
Thank you, worship, and through you to my esteemed colleague and twin brother, Howard Hughes, Councilor Jameson. Sorry, I'm out of a balcony here.
Yes.
The first question is rather embarrassing, not to me personally, but to an individual who I would characterize it as a fit of pique, canceled things unilaterally. That person was brought to book by the board and said, and told, "You can't do that without a board decision," and it was rescinded very quickly. Further recommend? Um, no names, no pack drill, but I believe the person feels chastened. As regards the, um, letters that various people received, we all know that there's no one in this room or anywhere else who can control, um, internet or Facebook. There were at least five letters that I received, and I believe pretty much everyone else received. I answered those letters directly. You saw what I said to the people individually. I jisted that letter and developed it a little bit more and put it on my own personal website as a counselor. And then I published that on a community website. I believe the nervous letters stopped after that. So I think that's been addressed. The real information about why we did what we did was put out, and I think people largely accepted. Okay, I don't think there's another question to answer at this point. I had an uncle, I'll be discouraging, but fairly brave, I had an uncle who worked in the mines in Sudbury, and he was aware of the long 6,000-foot shafts. And he said to me, "You know, Gordon, it's not the fall that kills people. It's the sudden stop in." Well, libraries have used to operate in a certain way for a long time ago, being questioned or brought to book. This council doesn't like that. They know that now. There will be planning. There will be parsing out of expenses. And they know there's no other way to operate with us but to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Keefe. Any further notices of motion? Councilor Cody?
Uh, no, I'll get to the notice of motion. I just want to thank our colleague for answering the library questions. As our member sitting on the library board, I literally sat back knowing that they would be responded to, which they were. I credit you for putting it in the light that you did. And it was erroneous. The people that were given information that we were not supporting in the library board was totally false, absolutely, totally. And anybody that was here, which were few, were watching online, knows better. But I want to thank, uh, Councilor O'Keefe for doing what you did on behalf of the council representing us on the library board.
As for notice of motion, uh, I don't know how we want to make this simple, but I'm gonna try and simplify it. I would like to say in the sale of garbage bags in the township and T L T I, they're available to any business that wants to sell them.
We'll look forward to debating the motion at next week's council meeting. Any further notices of motion? Okay, we're gonna move on to number eight, which is Mayor, oh, come on.
Sorry, I just wanted to question, Counselor, do you want to bring another one forward? Separating, uh, providing funding for the library, lady?
That's, that's it.
All right, sorry.
That's it, yeah. So Councilor O'Keefe is going to bring that motion forward, and Councilor Cody is going to order the notice of motion in regards to garbage bags. Both equally important. Thank you. So moving on to number eight, Mayor's Update. So as promised at previous, uh, previous council meeting, I would bring that county update, which will be, um, posted for reference along with the meeting minutes I have provided to the clerk. And I do apologize for not providing it to the council in advance at tonight's meeting to go in the package that was published. So just a quick rundown for January 2020. At the, we had a hall of planning advisory committee at, uh, at county, and Edgerton Cardinal official plan was presented and recommended for adoption. They did have some interesting floodplain mapping and line mapping that may be valuable for future information with this township. So I would encourage the planner to, uh, to reach out to Edgerton Cardinal, um, because they had some sort of consultants. And I'm certainly not qualified to speak to the details of it, but in light of recent events, it may be helpful in the future. And if it's not helpful, you can disregard it. Um, I would also recommend that, uh, that if you have any questions or concerns about that, you can refer to the official plan, which is presented online. Close meeting investigation services, we talked about the Ombudsman who covers that, and the clerk is reassured being that we do this here in T L T I, that that service exists, and should we have any investigations that come forward, the Ombudsman is available to us to do so. Uh, the county moved forward with borrowing by law of $7.5 million in line of credit, and that's to assist in the potential refurbishment of County Route 43 in the town of Campbell, which is desperately needed and awaiting federal approval and has been since May, along with 350,000, or, sorry, 350 other projects in the province that are still off because of lack of federal attention. Uh, county council schedule is now published, and the emergency measure coordinator is Allison Tutac, and Stephen Seal is the alternate if you have any issues with emergency measures. The C A O at county level will be looking at climate change, a potential climate change action plan and the effects on our region in respect of municipalities, so they will be looking to us for input. I realized that it was on the modernization piece, but that is a perfect example of where we might be able to work together and rather than re-up the wheel. Um, the budget areas report that was presented, there was no major flags. We do have supplementary income that was not budgeted for at county level, which is assisting us in, uh, helping make our reserves healthy at the county level. Um, as far as debating the budget, the first draft was a .33 decrease to the overall tax rate. We happen to report that after we had our budget deliberations, that it stayed, it remained at .33, at .33 decrease. And that was upheld by council. Police service board legislation is a potential problem. I believe I brought that up before. It was at discussion, highly discussed at Roma with Solicitor General. Um, this discussion at county also led us down the path to discuss regional police services. Apparently, it's been discussed at county previously. Um, I don't know at great length, but, um, because of the rising O P P costs, uh, there was discussion of that maybe we need to reopen this investigation because, um, while we appreciate all the work that the O P P does for us, we have other police services that operate somewhat differently, and a regional police service might be a better opportunity. I don't have an opinion one way or the other because I don't have the details at this point. So county council notes, um, I'm very pleased to report that the motion, part of the county budget for 2020 is that County Route 3 will be resurfaced from Village Landstone through to Fairfax. And also part of subsequent debate at county council, paved shoulders will be included in all resurfacing roads within the United County Civilize and Gravel unless otherwise indicated. I further confirm that County Route 3, the resurfacing that's happening this year, is included, paved shoulders are included in that. So I made that abundantly clear, um, so that we wouldn't be unfortunately surprised to not have them there after the pavings done. I also received verbal commitment that in 2020, uh, through the 2020 capital, or county budget, that County Route 3 and County Route 34 railway crossings are to be refurbished in the 2020 year. And, um, it was sort of skirted around at the operating budget time, and I almost missed out on my opportunity in the capital budget because it was referred at that point in time, a lot later remembered in time, and it is on camera. It is documented. They will be fixing it. Now, the key to this will be that it's hopefully fixed in a way that it will be sustained, not just a quick fix, um, because it's very costly fix when you're talking about the safety that's required to fix those with the trains and involving C N and so on and so forth. But, um, very proud to say that we have those commitments, and I do commit to hold. But very proud to say that we have those commitments and I do commit to holding them to that. So that is my county council report for January 2020. And as far as other updates, very, very pleased to have been part of Frost Fest opening ceremony on Friday night along with the Deputy Mayor, Councilor O'Keefe, Councilor Odey, and Councilor Jameson, who was running around like chicken on a second, just kidding. But if you haven't attended Frost Fest, if you haven't been there for the fireworks, absolutely spectacular. The firefighters do a great job. The skating, all families that were there, there had to have been well over 100 people participating in skating, plus they had hot chocolate and hot dogs and all of the other trimmings, along with great music, getting lots of fun and silliness and maybe some singing and some dancing by some council. But the MP and the O P P were also there to kick it off. And it is just another testament to small communities coming together to pull off a really great event that's well attended and anticipated by the residents of the community. So thank you to everybody who puts their hands together. Rockport Grand Carnival, another local, great community local event that's happening next weekend. It's the 40th annual event, so be sure to get your button down in Rockport, happening at the Rockport Bar, the Rockport Community Hall, and in and out of Rockport. So please take note of those events. Gearing up for our first Mayor's Chat later this month on February 27th in Sealy's Bay. It's my pleasure to host these Mayor's Chats throughout the year. As required, as needed, we're going to try and have a theme for all of them so that we can get people involved for different reasons. So we're going to be talking about community food improvement plan, senior ambassador plan, capital projects, county versus township, and everything else in between. So please keep your eyes open for that. Heritage Week is on February 17th. Please make sure that you stop by and look at the lobby display as our heritage community will be providing us some greater facts that are always interesting to take a look at, to see where we've came so far from and where we might be headed in the future. Lots of fun in the region. There's an ice fish, ice fishing clinic in Kemper's Park, and that's coming up by the next evening meeting. Family Day weekend, thank you. And just a last minute reminder, please keep our roads clear so our operators can get the snow, ice, and slush removed. We do have issues in some of the hamlets, some of the villages, I should say, with parked cars, and it becomes an issue for our operators. It's a safety issue for them and for the car and for other people who might be walking in and about sidewalks and what have you. So if you do have a car that is on the side street, please move it and buy by the bylaw that's an overnight parking on the English Mayor's. Councilor Odey, anything to add?
Thank you, worship. Would you care to expand on being present for the shiny new fire truck delivered a few weeks back?
Thank you for reminding me of that. Councilman May and myself were on hand to Rio when the pumper truck was delivered to Station 3, or County Road 32, this is a brand new fire truck that was sourced and approved here at this table. It was a single source, sole sourcing. We had to go get approval around our curve of Iowa. But I do think that was a well worthwhile venture mainly because that particular pumper truck, sourced anywhere else was at least $40,000 Canadian or worse, I believe. U S price tag for the exact same pumper truck is $450 U S. So we're talking considerable costs. I'm also very pleased to report that that pumper truck was sourced by a local, I would call them local, meaning that they're within two hours of this municipality for service. And the gentleman who created the company and creates these vehicles is very dedicated to making sure that they arrive when they're promised, be serviced when they're needed, and that they have backup pumper trucks if needed, if for some reason it needs to come out of service. A firefighter himself at Emery, and he has had a company for 2015. They are booking their building of further vehicles out within the next 18 months. So I could go on a lot for this particular business, but very dedicated to building the right trucks for the right reasons. And not just fire trucks, I believe they have a number of different vehicles that they put together, police, fire, ambulances, so on and so forth, so emergency vehicles for sure. So it was great, there was a number of firefighters on hand for that as well. So and they had a couple of their staff that came down that helped build it. So very cool. Anything else I forgot, gentlemen? As we are five after nine in that quarter. She might have thought we were going to be that much earlier than us. It's her fault, but really, anyways. Any further comments, announcements in regards to updating prior to adjournment? Seeing motion put forth by Councilor Jameson, second by Councilor Odey, the committee in the hold. Almost a favor? Those posed, carry on, thank you.